I now declare that the Plano City Council preliminary open meeting is reconvened in open session, that all council members are present. Councilmember Prince will be on Zoom as soon as you pop her up. All right. Our first item on preliminary agendas is consideration and action resulting from the executive session. Our next item, discussion and direction regarding the bond referendum.
Mayor and Council, Jason Gregorash is pinch hitting for Karen Rhodes this week, but tonight we need to get down to a final number, including the projects, as well as the propositions, the number of propositions to be able to go through this. So, Jason, you want to lead us off?
Asking for a password. Sorry. So, good evening. Jason Gregorash, I'm the Budget CIP Manager. As Mark said, we were last here on the 13th, and you had a presentation on the list of projects that are preliminarily included, sorry, in the proposed 2025 bond program grouped into propositions. Tonight, we're here seeking direction on which projects you would like to have included, and how you would like the propositions to be ordered as it goes before the voters on May the 3rd. We will then come back on February the 10th with a resolution to call the election. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. Any questions for Jason? Yeah. Okay, go ahead. Oh, sorry. There you go.
So, Jason, I have a question about the traffic improvements part. So, there are, it's broken into one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven subparts. So, can you just give me a very, very, very summarized meaning for each one of these?
I'd be happier if our Director of Engineering were available to answer that than me.
You were, you were there the other night, and so that was, he went over all those.
So, are these the ones that was from that tour?
Right. And they are, as it says, they are tentative at this point.
Councilmember Rick Adelli.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jason. I don't know if this is a question for you or maybe Chief Biggerstaff, but I was just wondering if we could go over, as I was really digging into this, one thing that struck me is that it looks like the 20 million for the Fire Station 8 remodel is almost as much as the cost for the Fire Station 14 new build. And so, I was just trying to, you know, figure out what's driving the renovation cost being, you know, almost comparable to a new build in that regard, just for greater understanding.
That's a great question. So, the way that was set up was during the last bond, we received money for a, for the remodel. And as we began to work on Station 5 and on Station 8, looking at them together, a little bit of a change in what we needed for Station 5 and a significant increase in the cost of construction caused us to move some of the money over to, from Station 8 over to Station 5. And if, I don't know if you've had a chance to go by Station 5 and look at it, but it, it's called a remodel, but for the most part, it's truly a rebuild more than, more than it is a remodel. At that, at that station, we'll have a total of five bays, increase the number of bedrooms, increase the size of the living space, all those things. Station 8 would be very similar to that. It's, it's a remodel, but it's closer to a rebuild. By the time you add the two additional bays that we're talking about adding, that way we'd have space for an ambulance if we needed it, have space for a reserve apparatus as well there. You would also have to add living space for additional firefighters. There are lockers, bathrooms, bedrooms, all those things. So, in doing that, along with all the major items that needed to be done, which were your roof, your AC, all those major items, it was the recommendation at that time, facilities for us to do this significant remodel. There'll be parts of it left, but for the most part, it will truly be closer to a rebuild than a remodel.
Okay. Well, thank you for that information, Chief Biggerstaff. So, that makes more sense. And so, it's still your opinion that it's more cost effective to do kind of the remodel that's close to a rebuild for Station 8 rather than doing, say, what we're doing with Station 3 where, you know, where we just kind of build a new one and move into that?
I think so, and it's in a great place where it is right now. It's got a larger lot, which gives us more options than, than we had at Station 3. So, I do think it's probably the best option. And just getting the opportunity to watch what happened at Station 5 and how good that's turning out, then I would, I would say, yeah, that's, that's probably the way to go.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Chief Biggerstaff.
You bet.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jason. Appreciate it. So, Mark sent us this spreadsheet that was, that was, I thought it was really effective. So, it's got all the, the list of items on here. And to, to try to move this thing along, I'm just going to go around the dais, and I'm going to start with Councilmember Smith. And on, on those three categories, you've got, okay, you've got reduce, if that's something you want to talk about, or if we would suggest moving it to four years from now. So, I'm hoping that, that everybody's kind of spent a lot of time on this and has some thoughts really put together on this so that we can kind of get through this. At the end of the day, the voters will decide, and so that's, that's what we're, we're doing. But I do want us to, to be thoughtful on how we want to present this to the voters. And so, Councilman Smith, if you don't mind, you're, you're a veteran here. You're one of the big veterans here. So, you can, you can, you've done this before. Yeah. So, I'm going to let you start us off. If there's any thoughts, if you want to leave everything alone, do you want to look at, look at some items that, that might be able to put into 29, I'll, I'll give you the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. It's, we've all spent a lot of time reviewing this, as our staff has done. I know we started out, Mark, I believe originally, we were at, what, 1.6 billion when the full wish list came in, when you ask everybody, just tell us what you need and what you're, what you want. And the staff did a good job. They cut that down in half, but then we're looking at 700, you know, million, which is, which is, is a huge, huge number. But I think the important thing to, for me to start with is for our citizens to realize that we're, we're all doing our jobs. We're trying to look at the needs of the city, but ultimately, we're only asking for the authority. So, whatever number we come up with tonight, that doesn't mean we're going to actually issue bonds and borrow that much money all down the road. Good, good point, as example would be, I think, our, our police training facility, which, which I believe we, we definitely need because it's, it's not just a training facility. For those of you know, it's a full-fledged police academy that trains and puts out peace officers for the whole area around here. And I think that's, that's a good thing to have. But we're showing that at 51 million, for instance, and we partner, one of our partners is the City of Richardson. And my understanding is that they will potentially put in approximately $18 million for, for that project. So, there's an example that 51 million that we're asking for because although they are a partner, they, you know, will put that in. Contractually, it's not something we can count on. Should something change on their side, they might not do it. So, we'll have to ask for the full 51. But that's a great example of that we're asking for more than we may actually end up, you know, end up issuing. The other thing is, we've had multiple reviews, staff, council, looking at this thing and trying to pare it down as most we can. What I looked at is what, what I've always looked at since I've been on council, is our job as a governmental entity, really, I used to say two things. There's only two things that, that we must provide. I've included that to be a three because I always considered, you know, public works as part of infrastructure, but we provide for public safety first and foremost. No matter what, we provide for public safety. Second thing is infrastructure. Even though we get yelled at a lot because our roads are under construction, they're under construction because we're not a, a new city anymore, and a majority of our infrastructure is 30-plus years old. We've done a good job maintaining it because we have gotten to this point, and we only need the 300-something million of infrastructure because we've got so much that needs to be replaced. But that's, that's where I came down. So, what I did is I looked at the, all the categories that, that we're asking for, and I think we can probably get it down closer to the, you know, you know, depending on how like things like the training center all work out, we can get down closer to the 600, 600 to 630 million, you know, plus or minus fairly, I'll say fairly easy, some may not have that same opinion. But for instance, I think we must do our public safety, our infrastructure and public works projects. With exception of that is some items in the streets section, I believe we could pull out independently and fund those out of general fund, capital maintenance, you know, other, other areas to on a pay-as-you-go kind of basis. And that I looked at would be the, let's see, where's my notes here? That we would be the downtown right-of-way because I think we can do that capital maintenance. And we also have a TIF set up for that area that we could potentially set it up and pull money from TIF to have TIF fund that. So, that would be one thing that could come out. Screening walls, again, big necessity, but I think, again, that's something that could be paid out of general funds, capital maintenance as we move down the road. And then lastly would be sidewalks. Same thing. Sidewalk number could be pulled out and, and done on a pay-as-you-go, you know, type basis. Other than those three, or well, there's four, I guess there was two items in, in the, the public works, but if we combine those as one, public works, those three things must get taken care of. The, the rest of the projects, land acquisitions, library repairs, all these things, you know, I, I agree that they probably need to be done, but I just, I don't think that we need to borrow long-term to pay for those things. Again, those are items that I'd like for us to see done in individual budget sessions and paid for out of ongoing expenses. So, that's pretty much what I see. And then the last thing is, no matter what we do, it's important to remember that the public, the voters, are ultimately the ones that are going to decide. All we're doing is making recommendations. It's going to be put on the ballot. Our citizens are the ones who are going to decide what gets done and what doesn't do. So, anyway, that's my thoughts, and I'll pass it on to Councilmember Williams.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, there we go. There you go. Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. And echoing Councilman Smith's sentiments that our primary responsibilities are public safety and infrastructure, my calculus combined a couple of things. First, it's the perceived criticality of several of these items based on the BRCACs, that may be the last chance I get to say that, the BRCACs recommendations and their sentiments, as well as how well-defined some of these were. So, prioritizing public safety and infrastructure, I think it's, it's beyond dispute for anybody who's been in it that we need a new police station. And I have been on the fence about the training center, but I have come down on the side of the fence in favor of just building a new one and making sure it lasts us 50 years. But that is, that is an investment now. I've also looked at things such as land acquisition, recognizing that land ain't going to get any cheaper. So, it would be better to do it now to the extent that we've identified the need than to wait when it's going to be more expensive. But then, things such as arterial concrete street construction overlay, no disputing that we need it, but it's $130 million item, which is a conspicuously round number. And it, it suggests that the specific needs under that category have not been defined. Now, I have no doubt, and I did the math several years ago, if you laid out all of Plano's streets and alleys end to end, it would stretch from Los Angeles to Washington DC. So, I have no doubt we could spend that money and more. But when we're looking at an historic size for our bond package, $700 million, which as last meeting we discussed, was a bitter pill to swallow, and looking at the desire to get this down to, I don't know, just shooting from the hip, what I feel is a semi-more palatable number of 600 million, there are several things that the, the BRCAC indicated were lower priority, that I said, let's look at deferring those to 2029 or seek other funding. But then for arterial concrete street construction overlay, I marked that as reduce or needs further discussion to see how much of that is critical truly in the next four years. Again, recognizing we could spend all of that and more in the next four years and probably invest quite a bit in orange traffic cones at the same time. And likewise with residential and collector street reconstruction, I wanted to see what opportunities there were to combine that with residential street and alley repair because in a recent, in a recent consent item, there was alley reconstruction designated for a certain part of the city, and I drove it before the meeting. And there were certainly areas that absolutely needed repair or replacement in the alleys that I drove, but not all of it. So, in the budget, budgetary discussions we've had of late and the challenges we're facing in operating as a built-out city rather than a growing city, and some of the challenges that go along with that, I want to see, again, with the residential construction, while it might be more efficient overall to go in and redo everything in an area all at once, I want to see, is that worth the immediate price tag given our other budgetary considerations? And so, I'd like to at least have more discussion with the items that I said I would like to see moved to 2029 or other funding. There was about $50 million that I said I would like to defer. And with the remainder out of about $250 million worth of street repair, I'd like to see if we could whittle that down a meaningful 50 million without sacrificing the, the quality of the infrastructure we have in the city.
Okay. Thank you. Is Casey on? She's not? Okay. We'll, we'll come back to her. Deputy Mayor Proton?
Well, I agree with, it's already been-
Oh, gosh, I'm really falling apart here. There we go.
It's already been said. I, Matt pointing out the fact that this is just a bond authority that we're agreeing on the amount that is going to be available for us to, to put out there, but it's not, Councilmember Williams was talking about the, driving the alleyways. And, and so, before we do get to the point of making these large expenses, City Manager Israelson, correct me if this is, is correct to say, that, that anything over $100,000 is going to come to council in advance?
Yes.
So, so, I mean, it, it seems like we could go through and line item everything, but I know we're on a time schedule here to, to be able to put this on the ballot. And I do feel like it's important that we give the voters the opportunity to weigh in on what they feel is important. As was already stated, the public safety and infrastructure has always been of top priority to all of our citizens. That comes out to our top two proposition, A and B items, 585 million of the 700 million. So, a large chunk of, of the money we're talking about does go towards that. Appreciate all the hard work the committee did in reviewing the items. There weren't a lot that were rated very low, some of them, such as screening walls. I mean, maybe it's not a priority safety-wise, but to me, that's kind of the first impression you see when you drive into our cities. So, that, I, I just really had a hard time with being able to mark anything off the list. I also do recognize that a lot of these projects will lend themselves to additional cost savings. For example, building some of the new facilities will eliminate leases that we are currently paying for at our public works maintenance building. If there, there aren't enough bays there to do maintenance on vehicles, so we're having to actually outsource some of the work we can't do in-house. So, that costs us more. So, long-term, we'll have some cost savings on reduction in leases, reduced outsourcing, and quite frankly, just the less disruption to our services to not be trying to add on and put Band-Aids on what we've already got to, to extend the life of the facilities. I think it will be a lot less disruptive in the case of the police headquarters and the public works building to be able to build new facilities and then move into them. And then we have, have plans for them down the road. The, the, really, the only public feedback that we've received that's missing from the proposed items at this point in time is the arts. And I haven't heard much feedback from any other council members in the discussions so far, or from others about, about how we will address the arts. I know this is very important to a lot of people. I also know that if we are successful in, in passing this bond and building our new police headquarters and moving the existing one out of downtown, we will have some properties that will be available that we can look at and decide how they might be used or sold and give us some additional money. The, unfortunately, the timing of this hasn't worked out really well with the, the conference of plan for the arts, which is going to be presented to us at the beginning of March, I believe it is. So, we really can't be very thoughtful in, in how we will execute long-term. But one thing I did notice when we were viewing some of the facilities, some of the needs, such as at the police headquarters and the new training facility was for larger classrooms. And one desperate need for our community and the arts and, and other groups is to have, have spaces to meet, to rehearse, just community space. And I know our mission statement for Plano Police includes in partnership with the community. So, I would just like to see that we entertain the idea of, of being incredibly thoughtful if the bonds pass and we do build these new facilities, and looking for ways to partner with police and other, other buildings so that, or other departments so that we can get the best maximum use out of any new facilities. I think that would be beneficial to everybody. So, I, you know, I, I'm of the opinion that we should let the, the voters decide what they think, what they think we should, should pass. So, that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Thank you for, for all the previous comments and statements because that makes my job so much easier. So, I, I, after looking at all these numbers, I finally realized why I'm a criminal lawyer rather than an accountant because I frankly cannot look at the numbers and tell you exactly where I am with, you know, a million dollars here, a million dollars there. All I can do is look at it from a standpoint of somebody who lives in Plano and somebody who raised her daughter and raised a family here in Plano. And I look at the proposition as is proposed, and currently there are A through F. And looking at the proposition in the, in the priority that is set out, I believe it is really a good idea for our residents to tell us, tell the city of Plano, what is important, what is their priority. The way it's laid out right now, I believe is, is definitely my priority. We definitely want to make sure our streets are improved. We definitely want to make sure that we have strong police presence. We want to make sure that when we have any type of weather-type storms or any fires that, you know, our fire department's right there. If we have medical emergency, we want our medical 911 to be there. So, those three are my top priorities. As for, for the things that are related to, to our, our future, which is our children, our future Plano residents who are going to make an impact, I think the library as well as the, what was the other one? Yeah, the libraries and the parks. Those are all very important as well. And I like the fact that it is lower on the priority because at this point, it is a big bond. And, you know, the, the residents are going to have to decide whether or not they, they're willing to invest now or push it down the road four years later and then invest in inflation, inflation-type- to invest now or push it down the road four years later and then invest in inflation-type amount later on. So I have little markings of where I believe my priority is, but after looking at the proposition, I believe it is exactly the way that I would have present the proposition in the priority that it is. And I would just leave it, like Deputy Mayor Proton, I would leave it for residents to make that decision. And I believe that the board that put this proposal together, they worked hard. And, you know, it's not, it's not, it's not something that they like presenting to us as a recommendation for a bond referendum just because they too are residents and they don't want their taxes to go up, but it is, it's gonna. Because Plano is getting old. We need to fix it in order to be competitive, you know? So that's how I'm going to end it.
Councilmember Prince. I don't know if you heard, but I just wanted you to kind of give me your synopsis on what you'd like to see out of the dollar amount and any other item listed in the props.
So, yeah, I missed some of the earlier conversations, so I don't know how much of this has been discussed, but on the police headquarters and the replacement, I have heard some concerns from residents just about this being used for that location because it was initially set aside for parkland. So I would like there to be some more discussion about that as well as just the thought about, is this land, you know, far enough east? Because I know some of the recommendations when I read through the bond information was we needed more, we needed to serve the east side as well. And so I just didn't know if this was the ideal location for that. Same thing with the Hall Park, this feeds into that, so I'd like to have more discussion about that. I would like to remove the miscellaneous, the 810,000 for miscellaneous under traffic improvements. And then also, I would like to see us instead of completely rebuild the police training center, I'd like that amount to go down and see if we can refurbish instead of rebuild. And then I would like to see potentially us focus on, for the residential and collector's street reconstruction, that was lower on their priority list. So I'd like to focus on repairs rather than, oh, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the alleys. I'd rather see us on the alley reconstruction, focus on repairing alleys and not building new alleys. So those were the main things for, on my list.
Got it. Thank you. Councilman Horn?
Thank you.
Hold on, let me get you on. There you go.
Thank you. I spent a considerable amount of time looking over these projects, looking over the dollar amount. Please understand that the emails, just most of the emails we get are concerned with our streets and infrastructure. Everybody says you're voted on fixing potholes and that's pretty much what we're faced with today. But also Plano's fire and rescue and our police are, I would put them in the best in the nation. So public safety is certainly high on our priorities. A love of my life within the city of Plano is Parks and Rec because that's where I got to start serving. And I think this, our city of excellence, we have an outstanding parks system as demonstrated by all the awards we're getting. And then it hasn't been until recently that I've seen our population really, I've witnessed personally, a population visiting the library system that we have. You go in there anytime, in the evenings, on the weekends, it's packed. There's activities going on all the time. But an area that you probably never see or even think about is our maintenance facility. Who keeps our fire engines running? Who keeps the police cars running? Who retrofits the new cars, the new tow hoes that we get? It's our maintenance facility. Who maintains the lawn mowers? Who maintains every day, 24/7, our trash trucks? It's the maintenance facility. And we went and I toured it and it is cramped. I mean, it is, it's, it just has to be bigger. If they're going to do repair on our new engines, they have to take the engines outside if they're going to do that because there's not enough base space in it. So when we look at all these projects, I would like to say I'd like to have them all at the single time. But I'm a taxpayer also, and when I looked at the dollar amount, they're sticker shock. When we look at just the street component, that's almost higher than all the bonds that we've had in the previous 15, 16 years, just on the street improvements and infrastructure. So I felt like from a sticker shock perspective, something had to give. And in that, I felt like that there were several approaches. It's a matter of timing. I look at Hall Park. That was tied to where we're going to have placement of Fire Station 14, our new station, which by the way, we need because of the response time, what we're going to improve on with regards to Collin Creek and Heritage Creekside and also Central Plano, but also our new police station, which we desperately need and the PCS, PSC component of it. I think because of the amount of construction that's going on in with those two facilities if this bond gets passed, that we can delay the procurement of the $10 million for the improvements on Hall Park. Again, just a matter of timing. Being a guy who used to work in the federal arena, one of the things that perked my attention was miscellaneous. So I said, okay, I'll give them some miscellaneous, but I also reduce the cost of that. I had another novel approach. I would like to push the police training station to the next bond or other funding source. And the reason why this was a novel approach, we have a new police station if that gets built. What do we do with the old police station? We can sell it. I mean, we, as a council, we can sell it. If we sell that prime real estate downtown, it will pay for that police training facility and give you temperature control firing range. I guarantee it. But that's just a novel approach there. We wouldn't even have to ask for bond money for that. And then likewise, as I go down there, I thought we'd be able to push off using either TIF funding or some other ways of methods, the screening wall reconstruction, alley reconstruction. And I also had in there, I pushed off the facility, maintenance facility, land acquisition. So I was able to take from my calculations here, I was able to reduce the bond as we were going to present. I know it's not a big number, but I was still able to reduce it to about $600 million. Still more than what we were looking for, but they're asking us to provide outstanding services and at the same time trying to be fiscally responsible. So those were the approaches I took when I looked at these numbers.
Thank you, Councilman Horn. Councilman Rick Adeli?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'll start by briefly echoing a lot of what's already been said. You know, we always hear about public safety and roads as being priorities. Those are priorities for me as well. I think, you know, when you look at, you know, I always say that, you know, for police and fire, there's nothing I do in my job where if I don't do it right in five minutes, somebody might die, you know? So that's something that we have to get right. And roads, as Councilmember Horn and so many others have alluded to, you know, if citizens didn't email about roads, we might actually be able to save on technology services a little bit, you know? Some of our servers might free up. But anyway, so that is a constant priority. So I mean, we have to prioritize those. I also agree with what I've heard about choices. The great thing about a bond proposition is that the voters of the city of Plano get to vote on these bond propositions directly. They get to vote on this themselves. But for them to do that, I think we have to give great information. And so that's why, while I'm going to go through some specific changes I'd like to see to the bond package itself, I think the most important change is in our voter information materials. I would like to see us give the 20-year cumulative impact because historically what we've done is we've given the year for one-year impact. And I think people frequently misunderstand that and think that's the all-in cost of this bond package. If we could do this all for 224 bucks, you know, for the average homeowner, I'd say let's do this and quite a bit more, you know? I'm in for 400, right? You know, but actually, if we look at the overall cost, if we were to stay at 700 million, staff has calculated that the payments for that would be, you know, including the interest on the debt, would be $1,855 million over 20 years. And then if you just do some back-of-the-envelope math, about 50% of our tax base is residential. So that means that more than 500 million is being paid by homeowners through their property taxes. And then when you further break that down into the fact that we've got about 72,000 single-family residences in the city, if you do the math, again, this is, you know, back-of-the-envelope math, but it's more than $7,000 for the mean average homeowner. I don't know if that's the median.
Over 20.
Over 20 years, I'm sorry. Thank you for that clarification, Mayor. Not in any one year, but I just want to make clear that, you know, if we approve this bond package, that's, I want residents to understand that's what we're signing up for, you know, the average, mean average homeowner paying a little over $7,000 over the course of 20 years. It might be even a little bit more than that, but it's on that order of magnitude. So that's, you know, that is the-
But you've got to remember, all the seniors are frozen.
Absolutely. And that's another thing I had asked about, all the seniors are frozen. And so that's a great point, Mayor. So for those of us who have not yet attained the honor of the tax freeze, you know, the actual impact could be quite a bit more. You're right, for the seniors, it could be less.
I just thought I'd chip that in right there.
But anyway, you know, so that's, so you're right. Some taxpayers won't see that impact. Other taxpayers will see a greater impact as a result of that. But that's a great point, Mayor. And so that information is critical to provide those choices. And also, Councilmember Prince, and I think I've heard some others, say this, breaking out some of the big-ticket items is really critical for giving voters meaningful choices. So I'd like to see us break this out a little bit more. I think, you know, every item that's over $50 million, I think, should be broken out as an individual item. I think it's that significant. We only have a few of those on this list, so I don't think we would have too many, too many things on here. I will also, you know, address kind of where we are as a city. We're reaching maturity, right, in terms of build-out? We have very little developable land left. And so our focus really needs to be on maintaining the excellent infrastructure we have, not as much on adding new things. Though certainly rebuilding existing things is a maintenance mindset. So taking all of that into account, going through these specific items, one thing I looked at was Hall Park, as Councilmember Horn mentioned, you know, I asked about that, have citizens been asking for that? And, you know, the response from the staff was, at this point in time, citizens have not demanded that Hall Park be built. And then there was more information about it not being widely known, that PDHQ could be built there, you know, as part of this bond package. But I would defer that, given that there are so many pressing issues. If there's not really a citizen demand for that $10 million project, I would defer Hall Park. I would further go through and the Parks Maintenance West Facility, which I think does need to be rebuilt, that's part of the Parkway Services Center rebuild. But, you know, I looked into that. It's got a $9 million price tag for a 6,584-square-foot building with related facilities on about three acres. And the construction cost per square foot, the way that we've got it now is $755 per square foot. You know, I checked with my wife who works in commercial real estate, and right now in Uptown Dallas, including land costs, Class AA office is being built for around $1,000 per square foot. High-end industrial is being built for anywhere up to $180 a square foot. So I just, I think we've got to value engineer that a little bit. I would probably, you know, just cut that number in half and say, let's value engineer this. And obviously, we have to build it, but the per-square-foot cost is just higher than I can support. You know, so I would just say, let's cut that in half and value engineer. And I think we can still build a great facility. Miscellaneous, a couple of council members have mentioned this, but miscellaneous under traffic improvements, I just, you know, I can't get behind sending miscellaneous to the voters. The miscellaneous in my mind has to come out. What else? On the libraries, you know, we have five libraries and the life of our bonds is 20 years. That lends itself perfectly to remodeling one library every four years. And so I would be supportive of putting Schimmel-Finnig on the ballot, but I would take Haggard and Parr off. And I will tell you, this is against my own self-interest. I live walking distance from Parr Library. I go there all the time. I love Parr Library. I hope the excellent employees at Parr Library, who I see there, will not be too offended. But Parr Library is only 24 years old. Every time I walk in there, I think, man, this looks great, you know? And so it just does not strike me as something that is an urgent priority for being remodeled at this time. Haggard Library, I used a lot growing up, you know, and it's by where my parents still live. But it's 35 years old and Schimmel-Finnig is 43. So I would defer Haggard to 2029 and Parr to 2033 and get on a cycle where we look at one of our five libraries every four years because the life of our bonds is 20 years. So over a 20-year cycle, we'll do all five libraries. So anyway, that would be my suggestion on that. And then a few other things, land acquisitions for parks. You know, the staff has put a lot of work into figuring out what the cost of getting the acreage that we're talking about at Levon Farms is. But I'd like to look at seeing if we can either negotiate with the developer or reduce that acreage. Because when I look at Bruce Glasscock Park, which is, you know, a park that's designed to build a very dense or to serve a very dense area of town and in a very, you know, high-cost, high-land-cost area of town, that being at 10 million and Levon Farms being at 15 million, I can definitely see that the land would cost that for that much land. But I just, I feel like when we're faced with, you know, having to trim somewhere to get down to the 600 million number that some of my colleagues are talking about that I support as well, that's an area where I think we've got to go down from 15 to 10. And then also, the 5 million for unidentified land purchases, given the pressing needs right now, I just, I think we have to defer something that has not yet been identified. And so I would defer that. And then Shell Park, I would defer that as well. I will tell you, same as Parr Library, my oldest son, my 10-year-old, played PSA baseball at Shell Park. And, you know, it's definitely quaint, you know? It kind of reminds me of my childhood in some ways, which I actually really enjoyed. But there was nothing when I was there that I thought was not good enough for my own children. And so I think that one can wait four years, you know, using that standard of, you know, I would not say it's good enough for anybody else's kids unless it's good enough for my kids, but it is good enough for my kids. So anyway, you know, so that's another place that I would look to trim. You know, and then the downtown right-of-way infrastructure, Councilmember Smith mentioned this, this is also something I brought up at the last meeting. We have the TURS number two specifically to invest in downtown. That's the whole point of it. And so to me, to say we're going to take on citywide debt instead of using the TURS on that is a little bit of double-dipping, you know, because that TURS is supposed to support infrastructure in the TURS zone. And so I would say, let's dedicate the next two years of TURS revenue. We can do that as a council. I know that's not the normal process, but we can do that. Let's dedicate that next two years at 3 million a year. That comes up with that 6 million. And then it's funded through the TURS instead of being debt-funded and incurring more interest, you know, more debt for the city. Then also, the facilities, maintenance facility, land acquisition, that 3.93 million actually is not the money that we're using to acquire the land itself. It's money that we're using to repay the land bank for acquiring that land. I agree that that repayment should happen at some point, but if we take out debt and we're paying interest, you know, there's ticking interest on this money and then we're doing that so that we- we're doing that so that we can repay the land bank, so that the money sits in the land bank until we have a use for it, to me, we're taking out a loan and paying interest just to move money from one account to another. And, you know, I think if the land bank runs out of money, that might be the time where if we had to take out a loan, we might, but I just don't think we should be paying interest and taking out debt to move money from one account to another. And then screening wall reconstruction, as Councilmember Horn and others have mentioned, I agree with Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Protem Holmer, screening walls are important, but they were ranked pretty low by the Bond Review Citizen Advisory Committee, they were toward the very bottom, and only one out of eight ranked that a high priority. So I would say that's something where we can, as others have mentioned, move that to our capital maintenance fund and try to fund the needed screening wall work through there. So I would either reduce that or take that out. And then, finally, on the 5 million for the unidentified park improvements, you know, I think we need some of that because we do get unanticipated requests. We got a petition today, you know, about Razor Park, but I would reduce that to 2 million, just because, you know, again, things where we don't have identified needs yet, I think are things that by definition, we don't know yet what we would spend the money on, that has a better chance of being able to wait than, you know, than something where we haven't identified pressing need. And then finally, on the Police Training Center, like Councilmembers Williams, Prince, and Horn, I was on the fence about that one as well, just because it's, you know, it's 34 years old, you know, was wondering last meeting, can we get more life out of it? But I toured that facility, it's, you know, in need of very significant work, and so I don't think, if we were to go the renovation route, I don't think we could wait on the renovation. And I have questions about whether it's the best use of money to spend 30 million to renovate rather than 50 million for a new build. And so I would echo comments that I think Councilmember Williams made, I think Horn and Prince made comments to this effect. I would put this on there, and I would say, we need to build something really good that's going to last 50 years, and I also think we need to pursue better cost recovery from other departments that are using that facility, because that is a big number, it's a big burden on our taxpayers. Other communities' taxpayers should be paying for their public safety the way that we're paying for ours. And so while it's important to partner with surrounding agencies, I think we need better cost recovery there. So with those changes, and then finally, what Councilmember Williams said about streets, streets are absolutely critical. Again, I said, public safety and roads, those are the 1A and 1B that we hear about, that we absolutely have to do. But a lot of those roads emails are, my goodness, you're doing too much at the same time, I'm really upset about all the closures and traffic. And so I think if we were to scale back the pace just slightly, you know, without, you know, without falling behind on maintenance, but, you know, maybe, you know, give our roads just slightly more breathing room, the community might actually appreciate that, and I think we can still keep up with road maintenance. So if we do all of that, I think we can get down toward that $600 million mark.
Well, I may have regretted going this route. But let me be real brief, because we're going to start our regular meeting in just five minutes. I'm not sure I got a whole lot of clarity there, but I do agree with all of you, I think we all agree on A, B, C, and D are very important, with some exceptions that everybody spoke of. I'm in fully support of the training center being built, it's critical, it's important. There are some areas that could be pushed on to 29, and I think a lot of you mentioned those. I think what we have to do, and we'll come back to that after we start our meeting, but what we have to really establish is what that number's going to be, and then the propositions, and whether or not we want six of them or just four of them, and I think that's something that we're going to have to work through. I do understand a lot of your logic on the Hall Park and the downtown infrastructure, those kind of things, I certainly agree with, but I don't want to, and as Deputy Mayor Protem said, and Mayor Protem says, I don't want to micromanage the work that's been done by city staff and all the work that they've put into over the last year, based on our, quite frankly, it's arbitrary what we think that number should be. And again, I know it's a big number, we're a big city, we're the ninth-largest city in Texas, and we have to take care of our city to be this city of excellence that we always talk about. And companies and our residents move here because we take care of it, we're the safest city in Texas and all across the United States, and we do that because we make sure that the police are trained properly, that they have a good department to work out of, good facilities, good automobiles, all the technology they need to be effective, same with our fire department, and then, as you all know, and we hear it every day, and all of you, let us know that we do prioritize our infrastructure. And so many of our companies that have moved to Plano appreciate the fact that our infrastructure is a high priority to us, and it's obviously a big priority. We knocked out about 25 miles in the last four years, and we hope to outdo that over the next four years. So you see how expensive it is to not only repair the concrete underneath, but the overlay just makes it a smoother ride, and it also lasts much longer. And we have gotten so many good feedback, so much good feedback in regard to what we're doing in our roads, and we really do feel like that they're going to last much longer than they have in the past. Our commitment is still there, we're going to commit to doing that as we move along. But when we start up again here after we start our regular meeting, we need to kind of come to a consensus on a number, a total number, and then come to a consensus on the propositions, because we've got to do this tonight. So with that being said, I'll take a recess, and we'll start the meeting right now. I now declare that the Plano City Council is reconvened into open session, that all members are present, Councilmember Prince is on Zoom. We'll begin tonight's regular meeting with the invocation led by Pastor Sam Fensroy with Mount Olive Church of Plano and the Pledge of Allegiance in Texas pledge, led by law enforcement explorer post 911. Would you please rise?
I guess I say a Happy New Year, since this is my first time. Can I also pray for Brother Fred Moses family, he did pass. Father, in the name of Jesus again, we just thank you for bringing us into this brand-new year. Thank you for this council. God, thank you for the wisdom that you give them to lead this city. I pray, God, that as you add, you would add people wisdom, that you might be able to conduct business in this city for all people. The Lord, we lift up Fred Moses's family. We pray, God, that you would comfort them and all of those whose lost loved ones. God, thank you for the opportunity to be a part of this great city and what you're doing, in Jesus's name, amen.
Be seated. You guys want to take a picture? Let's face this way.
Yeah.
All right. Come on over here, back up. You got it? All right, thanks, guys, thank you for doing this, appreciate it. Okay, there we go. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Guys, this is my little memento for you guys. Please don't support your wife with them, you may not be happy about what happens.
Thank you.
This is not a mountain-climbing device. Thank you, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Yeah, thank you, guys, appreciate it. Did you get one?
I did.
You already put it away?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much, all right. All right, appreciate it. Thank you, thanks again, appreciate it. All right, here we go. So we have a couple of proclamations today, and we prepared a proclamation today is International Holocaust Remembrance Day. And so I'd like to invite some friends up. Rabbi Weinberg, who's a board member with the American Jewish Committee and senior rabbi with Congregation Anshay Torah in Plano, Tim Wasserman, president-elect Jewish Committee, American Jewish Committee with the Dallas Regional Office, and Joel Schweitzer, Regional Director of American Jewish Committee, Dallas Regional Office. Would you all like to come on up? No, don't do that, we don't want that. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So whereas January 27 marks the International Holocaust Remembrance Day designated by the United Nations General Assembly to commemorate the anniversary of the liberation of Auschwitz Birkenau, the largest Nazi concentration extermination camp, and whereas January 27, 2025 marks 80 years since the liberation, and whereas today and every day, we remember and honor the memory of the 6 million Jews who were systematically murdered by Adolf Hitler and the Nazis, along with millions of other innocent victims, including people with disabilities, political dissidents, and others targeted for persecution. Whereas the City of Plano reaffirms its commitment to promoting tolerance, understanding, human dignity, while standing against all forms of hatred and discrimination, and whereas it is our duty to ensure that the lessons of the Holocaust remain a cornerstone of our collective memory and to honor the resilience and courage of those who survived and rebuilt their lives. Now therefore, I, John Muns, Mayor of the City of Plano, Texas, do hereby proclaim January 27, 2025, an International Holocaust Remembrance Day in the City of Plano, and call upon all residents to join in solemn remembrance of the victims, educate themselves about the Holocaust, and commit to building a more tolerant and compassionate society. All citizens are further urged to honor the lives that were lost and do their part to end antisemitism. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet.
Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. So now we have a presentation for the Avignon Windhaven HOA is being recertified as the best neighborhood. Plano's best neighborhood designation was developed to recognize neighborhoods that have had created a community that is beautiful, engaged, safe and thriving, the best, right, Curtis? All right, so Curtis is already here, our Director of Neighborhood Services, Stephanie Peacock, Neighborhood Engagement Manager, Perla Lara, Associate Planner, Amelia Ahmed, hi Amelia, how are you, President of Avignon Windhaven HOA, and Zep Khan, Vice President of Avignon Windhaven HOA. Welcome, guys, it's so good to see you.
You're going to give a lawyer a mic?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Well, Mayor, thank you very much, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate Avignon Windhaven for doing all the work, as the mayor talked about, best is beautiful, engaged, safe and thriving, and what it does is, it takes a lot of work to prove that you are not only engaged in your own neighborhood, but engaged in the city, and it's your work and the work of all your neighbors that really make Plano a great place to live and play. So thank you very much and congratulations.
All right, thank you. Okay, we're going to go back to preliminary open meeting, I will come back to item number two, but for the sake of time and making sure our board members don't hate me for this, I want to bring, let's move on to item number three, DART presentation. Paul Wageman and Nathan Barbera are members of the DART Board of Directors for Plano. Good evening. They're here to take questions from the council members. Okay. Go ahead.
So I guess, I have a whole bunch of questions, but first of all, I wanted to thank you. I understand the work that you guys are doing are very thankless, because we're one of the cities who are pretty much, as others think, we're more privileged, so it feels like we should contribute more to subsidize the DART program. And so I understand that the two of you are working very hard for the best interests of Plano, and I want to recognize that. So the second question I have is, are there any updates? Is there any progress as to where we're at? Is there any progress as to where we're at with regard to our, um, discussions with DART?
That's a, a, a good question, with, with not an easy answer. There has been work done by DART to facilitate some of the concerns that, that, uh, come from the city of Plano. Unfortunately, that discussion has focused more on service than on expenditures, which I know is not necessarily the answer that, uh, this council or the city or Paul and I are, are looking for. Therefore, we think that the current approach of working with Austin on the issue is that we need to continue that course.
Yeah, I would say, Councilwoman, that DART is finally engaged with the city. Uh, it's taken way too long to get the meetings to occur. Uh, there've been frank conversations had by the DART representatives with the city and, and Nathan and I. But the answer is the board, and I don't believe the senior staff really wants to address the key issues that Mayor Muns articulated in the letter he sent to our board chair. You know, we just have a issue on the board where there's either lack of confidence in the report that Ernst &amp; Young, uh, prepared and circulated to all the cities. You know, some of them just don't believe that Plano is subsidizing or supporting the operations of the agency. So, um, you know, even on the service front, they're talking about projects that the ci- uh, city has been wishing the agency to do for multiple years. These are projects we should have as a matter of course. They are not, to ameliorate the fact that we're subsidizing the agency to the degree we are. And so, even in the case of the service, they haven't identified funding to provide it. So, as we head into a, a new budget year, um, the agency will either continue to status quo budget, which is to fund everything we already are. Um, perhaps they'll consider funding additional items for DART in other cities. DART's not the only city in this situation.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams.
Yes, thank you both very much for representing the city on the, uh, DART board. Um, three questions. So you mentioned that, um, while DART is engaged, the discussions have revolved around service, not actual funding, um, or at least not much on funding. For the discussions that y'all have been involved in and witnessed regarding service, do you see what's been proposed for service adj- adjustments of any significant value to Plano, or maybe just an incremental value? Or characterize it as you wish.
I don't know that I would use the word significant. Um, like Mr. Wageman said, they, they are things that we have been asking for, for a long time, such as a circulator in the Legacy and Legacy West areas and a, perhaps an express service to DFW from, from that same area. So I think that they are certainly things that will benefit the city. I don't know that I would call those significant. What I would call significant would be perhaps removing the, if not all, the majority of the bus services and going on to a GoLink, uh, zone for the entire city. That would be significant, however, we have not, um, I haven't seen the temperature of the board in the meetings that I've attended, uh, to really want to take that on.
Have there been, sorry, this is a follow-up question to that, have there been any, um, appreciable discussions about, uh, citywide GoLink zone? Is it?
Yes, there have been, there have been substantive discussions about that without, without a doubt. Uh, I just don't know that the temperature of the board with its makeup and with its Dallas being able, you know, having the, the majority of the board, I don't know that I see that coming to fruition in this current discussion.
Okay, thank you. And while I, of course, want DART to be engaged in meaningful discussions, um, I want that to, engagement to be on a sustained basis. What's your sense of DART's willingness to engage beyond the end of this legislative session?
Well, it's an excellent question, Councilmember. I, you know, I would just be, uh, be conjecture on my part, uh, the fact that Plano and other cities are considering legislative action to try to remedy some of these issues, I think is certainly, and finally gotten the attention of the agency. However, we've been down this path before, this is our third legislative session where we've had an issue important to, to Plano and other cities, and, uh, as we've seen when, uh, that action does not result in the passage of legislation, that the agency sort of returns to its form in the interim. So I, um, you know, where I'm standing, this is an existential issue to our city. We cannot sustain the level of subsidy that we provide DART, we just can't. Uh, we've articulated that to our staff and to our board, and honestly, I just don't think there's widespread support to address that issue for Plano and for the handful of other cities that are in the same situation.
And you say widespread support, do you mean amongst the DART board?
I'm sorry.
When you say there's not widespread support, do you mean amongst the DART board?
Certainly the board, but I don't, honestly, the staff doesn't seem to embrace it either. And so, um, you know, we're, we really don't have a commitment from the staff or our board to address the issues that were identified in the letter from the mayor, uh, or by the Ernst &amp; Young report.
Okay, and thank you. And my last question, uh, with respect to the Silver Line, um, I've heard a lot of people talking up and talking down the benefit of the Silver Line to the city. Now, we're still a ways from actually having it, of course. Based on what you have seen from DART's plans and all of your discussions, um, what kind of real benefit would that present to the city when it's online in your estimation? Particularly with respect to the subsidy.
Well, it, so it'll be a new asset in our city, it'll be two stops, um, I think there's a total of approximately ten stops. It's about an hour from Plano to the airport on the Silver Line. Honestly, I don't know how much usage you'll get with that kind of, uh, time. You know, certainly, we've experienced significant, uh, development around rail stations in Plano, and so there'll be that opportunity. Uh, so it'll increase the amount of, um, service, obviously, to the, to the city, but will it address the funding gap in a significant way? Uh, you know, it'll address some of it, but certainly not the majority of it.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Councilmember, uh, Prince has her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you. So even if the DART staff and, um, the, the leadership there disagrees with the Ernst &amp; Young report, what would you say their views are on the amount of money that we are spending to subsidize citizens from, um, our northern cities traveling down to the south to use the system, or the current lack of ridership we see in the amount we're investing for the few amount of people that are currently using the system?
I think with regard to the report, there is a, uh, some hesitancy on the board to adapt it. I don't think it matters if it's adopted or not, the report is what it is, it's done by Ernst &amp; Young and most respected consulting firms in the country. So whether the board adopts it or not is immaterial, and, you know, the numbers are what the numbers are. The, the member cities that complain about it are the, the Don- the Donny cities opposed to Plano, which is a donor city. Uh, and even if you took twenty million dollars off the subsidy, we're still paying forty-five million more a year than, than we're getting out of it based on the report. And that's with a twenty million dollar reduction if the report is skewed in any fashion. So, I, I don't think it matters if the report's adopted, I think the numbers speak for themselves, and I don't think it's a sustainable path for the city to keep going down this path that we've been going year after year after year is providing this subsidy.
I think one of the benefits of adopting the report, uh, and the intention always was, is that this would be replicated on a frequent basis, perhaps not every fiscal year, but possibly every other year. Councilmember Williams, you're well aware of the legislative effort was to be able to have the agency provide to every member city what it spends in their city each year. And so, um, I don't view this as a one and done, it certainly is a, a snapshot in time. I think it needs to be done on a regular basis so all the cities understand, uh, what the benefit is of their membership.
Councilmember Horn.
Again, thank you gentlemen for the hard work you put in on this DART board. Um, I'm sure it's a thankless job. Uh, getting back to, uh, what, uh, Councilwoman Prince was talking about, the EY report, as you alluded to, Mr. Barbera, the EY is a highly reputable firm. They have reams or scores of s- staff to do quality control of their accounting practices. A couple of weeks back, we had Ms. Lee here give a presentation, and frankly, I failed to ask her at that point. She did not va- she would not validate the number that EY was presenting as what, as far as value to us, what we were losing. It was around sixty-six million dollars. Do you? Per year. Do you see, uh, someone within their staff coming up with another methodology to come up with a revised number to counter what EY came up with? Do you see something like that? I mean, cause it seemed to me after she left here, I was left with the impression that they were going to come up with some type of new accounting to, to come up with a, a value added to the city of Plano. Do you see any evidence of that coming from their direction, or?
Personally, I, I don't, um, see anything that would happen to, uh, change the report, but that's like I previously said, so, okay, let's change it, let's drop twenty million off. We're still paying forty-five or forty-six million a year into a system, more than we're getting out of it. So even if there was another way to look at it, I don't think it's gonna change it enough to where for Plano's sense, it changes the problem. It just may put a different number on it, but it's still gonna be a significant financial problem.
I got, because if she was questioning the way EY was to, coming up with their methodology as far as coming up with that number, then I don't know how else you're gonna come up with it. You can only, uh, massage the number so much.
There's a reason it took three years to get their support, because everybody knew what it was going to say, and lo and behold, it does say that. So that's why there, in my opinion, there's been the hesitancy to do this, um, because it said what everybody thought it would say.
Right, thank you.
Councilmember Rick Adelli.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, uh, first of all, uh, uh, Paul and Nathan, thank you so much for the hard work you do. Uh, I know it's, it's probably harder these days than, than most roles, and, and thank you for, uh, you know, for serving, uh, in such a thankless capacity. We really appreciate what you're doing, not just for the city of Plano, but for the region and for public transit, so thank you. I, I appreciate you, uh, you know, describing this, Paul, as an existential issue, uh, or maybe Nathan, maybe you both said that, uh, but obviously, we cannot sustain-
I can't use that big of a word, that was definitely Paul, so.
Well, there, there you go, there you go, but I think you both said it in as many words, uh, that we cannot sustain this subsidy. Uh, and I, I really thank you for representing not just Plano's interest, though, thank you for that, uh, but representing what's good for regional transit, what's good for cities partnering together through an agency like DART and all, you know, having, uh, uh, you know, a fair seat at the table. Uh, it's really not an either or, so thank you for that. With that, uh, when, uh, Ms. Lee was here, I did ask her about the, uh, EY report, and, uh, as you talked about Nathan, Erst &amp; Young is, is, you know, a big four accounting firm, it's one of the most reputable consulting firms in the world. Ms. Lee would not commit to the Ernst &amp; Young report, she did mention, uh, not having had sufficient time to review it yet, which, which is fair for a certain amount of time. Um, you know, because obviously, we all need time to dig into things. At this juncture, uh, does DART leadership accept the EY report, and if not, have any reasons been given for doubting its conclusions?
Yeah, they don't accept it. They view it as a work product that was requested by the thirteen cities or a significant number of the thirteen cities. You know, the reality is, we finally, uh, obtained the services of Ernst &amp; Young because Plano, uh, excuse me, DART produced a number of reports that did not find, um, merit with certainly this city, other cities, and the Texas Legislature. I believe there was one report that essentially said, "We got more in service than we paid in." And, uh, you know, this is because they're using other calculations like enhancement to the tax base and things like that. I think, you know, again, I don't wanna speak for Councilmember Williams, but this really started with, we know what we pay you, we wanna know what you provide us in the way of service. And, uh, this effort by Ernst &amp; Young was their, uh, the result of that request. Certainly, you could do other models and you can pre- put in other inputs and you might get a different answer, but I think fundamentally, we were looking to understand how much does the agency spend annually in the city.
Well, and thank you for, for getting that, Amber, I do remember one report where it was just broken out based on population of member cities, which of course does not tell how much is being spent in each member city. Um, so thank you for, for your perseverance in that regard. Have y'all noticed any, uh, difference in how the, the staff at DART relates to representatives from the city of Dallas versus other member cities?
I, I wouldn't say that there's a preference towards the city of Dallas, I would say that they, um, they work with all of us. I would say that on a time and occasion, it seems that whatever the Dallas decision, um, their preference is that Tim's to, um, be the same opinion of, of staff, but, uh, I wouldn't say that they, uh, there's a preference towards Dallas or that they work more closely with Dallas. I might actually argue the opposite, cause I know sometimes they, we have a trouble getting meetings with people from the city of Dallas on transportation issues, but that's a whole nother story, a whole nother work. But no, I don't feel that way, but I do feel that at times, um, and it's been discussed that there's, you know, you've rarely seen a, a board vote where the Dallas majority controls the vote by one vote. It's really not so much the formal votes that happen when we have our statutory meetings on the fourth Tuesday every month at six o'clock, it's the control of the discussion in our committee meetings and it's, and in our work, uh, sessions, that, um, in my opinion, could be a little problematic.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And then, uh, finally, just to talk about expenditures versus value, because that was a point Ms. Lee highlighted when, when she came here, um, you know, some, some of the expenditures in Plano, uh, I, I've observed to produce results like buses with low ridership, and, uh, um, certainly I see on, on Spring Creek, you know, frequently buses with, with no or a minimal number of riders on them, uh, you know, driving east and west on, on Spring Creek Parkway to give one example. Does DART have a solution for, uh, fixed route bus service that is in a, in a low ridership position?
The agency is committed to increase headways on buses in areas where it makes sense, that's not our city. Uh, we don't have the density or the ridership to really justify that. So what we're asking for is really eliminate the local bus routes. I guess there are some re- regional or multi-city routes that either emanate or terminate here in Plano that might still need to be, uh, utilized or operated. Uh, we're, we're asking that we have more microtransit and, um, on-demand service.
Yes.
As Nathan mentioned, uh, you know, in fact, make the city an entire zone.
Yes. Like citywide GoLink and, and, and circulator routes and things of that.
Correct. The, the pushback we get is it's expensive. And it may well be expensive, but it's certainly less expensive than operating empty buses. I think the prior budget year, we had a budget for GoLink of nineteen million dollars. We spent hundreds of millions of dollars on buses all over the city. We pay, we spent hundreds of millions of dollars in operating costs and capital costs on commuter rail that moves very few people, so. But you have board members that do not want to see additional GoLink service because they view it as a Cadillac service and, you know, they don't get it. And so, the reality is, the agency needs to change what it's doing, and it's not just for Plano, it's really for all thirteen cities. There is not a single city in our membership that has honestly fully adequate transit service, uh, for its people.
Thank you. And, and my, my last question regarding underutilized buses, uh, does DART ever undertake environmental analysis of the impact of large underutilized buses versus microtransit, and, and whether it might be more environmentally friendly, uh, not to be, you know, having, you know, huge fuel-consuming buses, uh, uh, you know, where utilization is low?
To be honest with you, I don't know the answer to that question, um, from the environment analysis, and I'm sure we could get that answered, but it's, it's not something that's, that I recall coming up in, in any of the, uh, meetings that I've attended.
Well, thank you both for, for working hard for what's good for the city of Plano and what's good for regional transit for the whole region, I appreciate y'all doing both of those things.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, uh-
Because Mr. Wageman said he didn't want to speak for me, I'll go ahead and speak for myself, but that's correct. Going back to 2019, we've sought simple fiscal transparency from DART, and we have gone through two legislative sessions now because we've come up empty every time. And we have faithfully tried to work with DART, worked through our board for many years now, and gotten pretty much nowhere. And that's why we're looking at going through the legislature one more time this legislative session. But just to be clear, and so I can not put Paul in the position of speaking for me, yes, this, this is coming up in the legislature again because we've made no progress with all of our attempts to work with DART for fiscal transparency and just a model that makes sense for the Plano citizens who are putting in about as much into the DART system vis-à-vis their sales tax as they're paying in property tax.
Okay. I think we have some speakers. All right. Go ahead.
If I could, just one, one last point. It's important, regional transportation is increasingly important in North Texas. It's important for Plano to be involved in that. But the system that we are currently in is just not financially feasible. And for the money that we're spending with this, I feel like we could come up with our own system or perhaps partner with some of our neighbors in Collin County to have a system like Denton County has that makes much more financial sense and operates better for the citizens.
Thanks, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. We do have nine speakers. How much time, Mr. Mayor?
Minute each.
Minute each? Got it. The first speaker is William Cravens.
Mr. Craven, did you sign up for the wrong? That's okay. That's okay. When I saw your name, I thought, boy, you are involved in everything.
Okay. Then the next speaker is Daniel Rodriguez.
All right. Thank you, Plano. My name is Daniel Rodriguez. I am, I'm not from Plano, but I also commute there from Fort Worth to get to my business and my work. For dailies, I usually, usually take the TRE to Plano to get to my work and also from evening rush and morning rush. I feel like, I heard that, I've been hearing that the GoLink, if we change the GoLink services to like all of Plano, I felt like it would, it would resolve, but at the same time, I feel like it wouldn't be insufficient. Although, I feel like the bus routes that I've seen around, that I usually take a lot, either like Northwest Communications Ride and also Parked Road, like it's more, more efficient. We should keep the fixed bus routes that we have, usually that we have, and keep the DARTs as it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Shaim Ganishram.
Hello. Can y'all hear me?
Hold on just one moment.
Hello.
Hi. I will need you to turn on your camera. Go ahead.
Hello. I am Shom, a resident of Frisco, although my mom does commute to Plano. And I go to Plano often to catch the red orange lines and catch some buses. Rail and buses are on a fixed schedule and are more dependable on like GoLink. So I believe that focusing on improving bus and rail service is more important than trying to improve GoLink service in Plano. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tyler Wright. He's not here.
He's not here.
We'll move on to Nathaniel Adam. Oh, he's on Zoom. Go ahead.
Hello, Plano City Council. My name is Nathaniel Adam, and I'm a resident of Plano at 7128 Libby Road. As a regular user of the bus routes that we have in Plano, like the ones that are only in Plano, I think that the, the proposal to change it to a citywide GoLink zone will be both significantly more expensive and also significantly worse service because it does, that's this misunderstanding of how transit works. I also think that you should not be as concerned as you are about the funding inequality portrayed by the EY study because I think that since Dallas is such a powerhouse of this region, I think it does make sense to invest in their transit
Twenty seconds.
to make sure that they can still function well as a city. I also don't like how this, the precedent that this sets, as it can cripple cooperative regional development in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Wright is on Zoom. So, Mr. Wright, if you'll turn on your camera and microphone.
Of course.
Go ahead.
Thank you for the flexibility. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I apologize, I couldn't make it in person after all. I did want to echo some of the statements of some of my other friends and compatriots there with Dallas Area Transit Alliance. I think the biggest concern with us is GoLink services and other kind of Uber-like microtransit does have serious issues once they start to scale when it comes to reliably servicing people timely, as well as the money and subsidy for passenger. So if somebody goes from one end of Plano to the other, because you eliminated the bus route, that's going to be more expensive than just having a fixed service. I've ridden DCTA GoZone as well as
Twenty seconds.
other services, of course. The wait times are variable. I strongly recommend try it yourself. Take GoZone and then realize what you're going to saddle your people with. I do believe Plano deserves more. I just ask that we've got to consider the context of the region as well. As a commuter to Plano, if you cut bus service, I'm going to find a new job. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Dariel Solis. And then we have Ariel Herrera.
Hello. My name is Ariel Herrera, and I'm from Dallas, but I go to UTD, which is near Plano. I think we should keep our fixed bus routes so that people from your UTD can commute to your school in a predictable way without having to worry about GoLinks. Often, long wait times, which I often hear from many people. I think the buses offer a more predictable schedule in the trains too than GoLink. And also, the, running the buses is cheaper than, and then GoLink, as many studies have shown. And thank you.
Thank you.
Corey Reinicker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Corey Reinicker. I moved to downtown Plano fifteen years ago after finishing college in Ohio. Arriving in Texas, I was amazed to find, in car-centric Dallas of all places, a built-out rail net, light rail network, complete with walkable urban station areas. I found employment accessible by rail. We purchased our house to be within walking distance of the DART station, and for about seven years, I was a daily red line commuter. I worry that clawing back funds will imperil the substantial improvements that have been made to security and cleanliness on DART. And I worry about the precedent that this sets for the relationship between DART and its member cities. While there's been constant demands for transparency from DART, I feel that there's been a lack of transparency from city leadership here. I've not heard any clear, consistent vision for the goals, objectives from our leaders. With Plano as a mature city and the population of Collin County undergoing tremendous growth, thoughtfully implemented regional transit is as important as ever. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our last speaker is David Yakuban. He was supposed to be on Zoom and is not, and so that will finish it out.
Okay. Thank you. This, this presentation was for information only, and so we're, we're just here to hear from our board members. The next item is, oh, I'm sorry. Mark, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor. Just, just wanted to add a few, few quick elements in. You know, I, I see a lot of the email coming across to the city council, and I would strongly encourage folks to make sure that they are going and, and looking at the resources that are available to the community, specifically DART system maps, and really looking at, when we talk about fixed route service and we're talking about some of those elements that people are speaking passionately about, make sure you go look and look at how many routes are really in Plano, and then look at some other cities. A few quick statistics, and these are from DART's reports from fiscal year 2022. The city of Garland had seven hundred and eighteen bus stops and two light rail stops for thirty-eight million dollars. Richardson has three hundred and fifty-five bus stops, four light rail service stops, for fifty-two million dollars. Irving has four hundred and fifty-seven bus stops, seven light rail stops, for ninety-four million. Plano has two hundred and eighty-nine bus stops, two light rail services, for a hundred and four million dollars. Part of the fiduciary duty that the council and the staff face here is making sure that for the money that we're getting as a partner, that Plano has the same level, quality of service and the same equity as other cities. We are an early user of GoLink. It's actually been absorbed fairly well in Plano, which is one of the reasons why the suggestion of looking at GoLink for citywide service so that people, regardless of where they are in Plano, can get to the hospital, can get to the grocery store, can get to their family, or can get from West Plano over to the rail lines in, in East Plano. So I would ask that folks that are looking for more information on this, please study the, the service maps and study some of the data because I think it's really important that as we're talking about services in Plano, and we are talking about people in Plano who need service, that we are talking about equity, we are talking about fairness, and we are talking about Plano getting the, the value that we've requested. So with that, Mayor, turn it back over.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Next item is Silverline Station's area plan.
Good evening, Council. I'm Drew Bronner, comprehensive planning manager with the Planning Department. And I'll be presenting an overview of the Silverline Station's area plan, which will be presented for your consideration on the regular agenda. This is a transit-oriented small area plan, which will establish the long-term vision for the areas around Plano's two future Silverline stations at 12th Street and Shiloh Road. And topics I will cover include the project timeline overview. This document is the culmination of many years of planning effort, including two prior analysis reports, the public input and outreach process. Robust public input was critical to developing the plan's goals and vision, alignment with the comprehensive plan policies and actions, and then long-term use of the plan as a policy guide for future zoning and development decisions and project implementation. This is a visual timeline of our planning efforts. Staff began work back in 2020, developing two analysis reports to establish an understanding of the conditions and trends in these areas. First, a market assessment. This looked at regional market trends and real estate strengths and challenges of each station area. Then an existing conditions report. This looked at the planning history in these areas, TOD best practices, built environment inventory, and a zoning analysis. These reports were presented to the P&amp;Z Commission, which then directed staff to begin the planning process for these stations. The planning process began in spring 2023, starting with station area goal development. Then specific strategies and recommendations were identified and refined through multiple rounds of public input. A full plan document was developed throughout last year and was unanimously approved by the P&amp;Z Commission in January. The plan goals and vision were driven by public input that included the formation of an advisory group. This included residents, property owners, and other area stakeholders, as well as representatives from the P&amp;Z and Heritage Commissions. This group was critical in providing in-depth knowledge of the issues and opportunities of these two areas. Additionally, broad community input was sought via in-person and online outreach. This slide provides an overview of the public engagement process. Public input events are color-coded by type of engagement. The plan started with a series of advisory group events in green. This included a virtual visioning workshop to discuss planned goals and opportunities, and a three-day design charrette to develop the initial plan visions. Opportunities for broader community input followed, first with a public open house number one at the conclusion of that three-day design charrette, a community survey, which received over two hundred and fifty responses, and a virtual open house to engage with people online. Recommendations were refined through another round of in-person events with the advisory group and a public open house number two. And the draft plan was presented to P&amp;Z as a series of discussion items, concluding with the approval hearing in January of this year. A public engagement summary report is included as a plan appendix. This includes event details, online outreach methods, which included a project website and social media posts, and key takeaways from the input. Next, this is an overview of the comprehensive plan policies that guide station area planning. The transit-oriented development policy encourages proactive mixed-use planning near planned rail stations. Next, the land use policy action six gives guidance for the development of small area plans for focused development and redevelopment efforts. TOD action two provides direction to prepare plans within half a mile of stations with consideration of market potential. And TOD action three encourages the city to proactively work with property owners to align zoning with adopted area plans, and this is identified as a near-term implementation step in the plan. The comprehensive plan gives direction that small area plans are to be used as an extension of the comprehensive plan. Upon approval, the station areas plan will be used when reviewing future zoning requests based on the greater specificity of the land use vision and development type recommendations. In summary, the plan is intended to be used for zoning change and development request evaluations, to consider necessary future services, programs, and studies for these areas, and guidance for analyzing and implementing infrastructure projects. The main components of the plan include planned goals grouped into three themes, land use, transportation, and open space and character. These set the overarching direction for the future of the station areas. These goals are represented through vision maps for each of these themes. The land use vision maps identify the locations of development types, each with a recommended set of character-defining elements, such as building heights, block pattern, and parking orientation. Transportation and open space vision maps identify improvements and project opportunities to support the land use visions. A recommendations and strategies chapter is included that provides detail on plan priorities and how to implement the identified plan vision elements. And finally, an implementation actions chapter provides an actionable checklist to track plan progress. Next, I'll walk through examples of the land use and development guidance provided by the station areas plan. This slide shows the future land use map in relation to the rail stations. This map gives guidance for appropriate uses and development characteristics across large areas of the city. In comparison, this is the land use vision map for the 12th Street station area. This map provides development guidance tailored to the opportunities and goals of the station areas as determined through public input. This offers more precise direction for the appropriate locations of uses and building form. For example, this slide indicates the proposed building heights in the 12th Street station area vision map. The future land use map on the left gives broad guidance that buildings in the neighborhoods category should be one to two stories, and the downtown quarters category up to five stories. Whereas the proposed land use vision map for 12th Street provides more specific guidance for appropriate maximum heights. This guidance helps to maintain the character of residential neighborhoods while also focusing density near the station. density near the station. This slide shows the resulting mix of uses guidance compared to the current future land use map. The 12th Street station land use vision provides more targeted direction for where mixed-use development would be appropriate, resulting in 39% of the station area recommended for mixed-use development. Next, the Shiloh Road station area land use vision map. The recommended mix of uses and heights is largely unchanged. The main change is the addition of the mixed-use activity hub development type, which supports a moderate amount of mixed-use development nearest the station. And the result of this addition is 5% of the station areas would support mixed-use development with the area south of 14th remaining primarily non-residential and primarily residential to the north. The plan provides guidance for protecting residential character of neighborhoods near the station areas with residential adjacency transitions. For 12th Street Station, this includes a three-story height maximum adjacent to the Douglas Community and the addition of the evolving industry development type, which serves as a land use intensity transition. And these transition areas are identified here on the map with the three-story height transition area for the Douglas Community with the hatched blue area, and then the evolving industry in the red area, which provides a use transition between residential areas nearest the station and the heavier uses in the light industrial district. Similarly, for the Shiloh Road area, a residential height transition is recommended to preserve existing single-family neighborhood character with a two-story height maximum near existing single-family and up to four stories closer to the station. And then finally, the plan includes a density bonus recommendation for the 12th Street station area. Current comprehensive plan guidance recommends that greater density should be focused nearest the rail stations. This bonus would provide an opportunity for up to three additional stories if development provides community benefits. And examples identified in the plan include public open space, public parking, or a percentage of affordable housing. And in the case a development does not qualify for the bonus, then the five-story maximum would apply. Development of a zoning tool to implement this bonus is recommended as a near-term And the transit center mixed-use development type in blue in the 12th Street area is the only area where the bonus would be supported. And this concludes the plan overview, and I'm available for any questions.
Appreciate it. Any questions for staff? Terrific. Thanks for your work on this. This is really well done. Moving on, consent in regular agendas. Any item council member would like to remove? I think there is one requested to remove. Which one?
A citizen requested K. And Mr. Williams, did you request D?
Let me make sure. Yes.
K and B?
D, like.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I was going to request I.
I, K, D. Okay.
Should we strip them all off?
No, I believe, I would be here.
Yeah, I'm suspect.
I think I know where you're going.
Items for discussion or future agenda items? All right, let's go back to item number two on the bond referendum. Like I said when we finished, I think Deputy Mayor Protem, Mayor Protem and I are satisfied with the number, but we'd certainly be glad to compromise on that number. I know Councilmember Smith had some items that would definitely, I think, would work as far as, I think you were talking about downtown, the perimeter walls, sidewalks, and what else, Rick? Sorry. Right-of-way?
Yeah, the downtown right-of-way, green walls, and sidewalks. Anything else?
Well, yeah. The only...
Here, let me turn you on. I'm sorry. There you go.
The main three items that I was, let me start, I guess, generally by saying, I think most of us, a lot of us I heard were kind of hitting around that 600 million number. And I think after a nice discussion, I think Mark and everybody look at, we'd probably be able to get somewhere close to that number than the 700 million number. I did find it interesting, I think, you know, Councilmember Riccadelli, I love the way, he has such an analytical mind, and Councilmember Williams also, when it comes to, you know, the mathematical analysis, but I found it interesting that if you break it out to the 20-year figure, that on our, for our residential taxpayers, it's about $7,000 over that timeframe. So essentially, what we're talking about, if you really want to break it down into something that's understandable, you're basically talking about a Netflix premium subscription that you're paying for, you know, every month. And instead of doing that, you're getting the benefits of the public safety, the infrastructure, and everything else. So I found that, you know, that very helpful. It really makes me a little bit more comfortable with, you know, the type of numbers that we're talking about. But I would say, again, public safety, I'm good with everything that's in public safety, the streets, everything except for the three items that they mentioned there. And then I would, I know we had the A, B, C, D, whatever, and we broke out public works and the public maintenance facilities in two separate ones. I would suggest blending those into one item and still providing those, and then everything else could be covered on a pay-as-you-go basis, either capital maintenance, TIF funds, or, you know, general funds. So somewhere along that one to get us down to it.
Okay. I think I've got it. Would it be better if we just looked at and voted on street improvements as Proposition A, and whether or not everybody is satisfied with that? Would that work better? Anthony, I know where you stand, but we've got to let, somehow, we have to get a majority of the people to agree on all of these items, and we can certainly consolidate those that we feel like need to be.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just interject, I think on the streets...
If I'm not mistaken, in Proposition A is where the downtown right-of-way was, that I think I've heard a majority of council talk about, and also the screening walls that Councilmember Smith was talking about, that I think several council members...
Would everybody be okay if we took downtown, screening walls, sidewalks, and miscellaneous? Is miscellaneous in...
Yeah, I think that's in streets.
If we took those out of street improvements?
Definitely.
Okay? Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Gosh, this is great. Okay, Proposition B, public safety facilities. Let me see, where was I? We, I think we have, is everybody okay with public safety facilities?
Yes.
Okay.
Including the training facility?
Yes, yes, yes. I think there's votes for the training.
Again, excuse me.
Go ahead. Hold on, let me get you, let me get you up.
Again, I'm all for the new training facility. Don't get me wrong with that. But I think once we have the new headquarters built, we'll have a surplus building in downtown that'll be worth a significant amount of money. And I'm thinking, because of the timing of what we're looking at here, that with the transition, and I don't know what the economics is going to look like in four years, I mean, if I had that crystal ball, I'd be, wouldn't be in Plano. But the point being is, is I think we may have an avenue to pay for that building without having to go through a bond. And that's what I was trying to, again, push that forward to the, or look at another avenue on how to pay for that. And that was the only reason I was hoping to do that.
No, I appreciate the fact that, but the issue is, for something like the police headquarters, it, we'd be thrilled if it got built by the end of this bond issue.
It's going to be a...
Can we put that one as a separate line item if we're going to have that?
Yeah. I would support anything over 50 million being a separate line item.
Well, I think that's, you're really trying to educate the voter, but that is really going to confuse. You put, that's going to be 15 line items.
Well, I guess...
Yeah, sorry.
I mean, I'm okay if you want to separate that, but I'm saying, the less propositions we have, and again, I'm not trying to consolidate, I'm just saying, the less we have, I think the voter's going to understand what they're voting for.
So here's my thing. I just feel like the more all of us are on the same page and supportive of all of this, and that we can get behind, that we all feel like the things on this, we feel strongly about going to, the more that there's going to be support for the community to go out and get behind these. So I feel like if, you know, the thought that we're going to reduce this sum and come with a more reasonable number, I think is a plus, but I still do, I would rather us get some of these passed than to come and say, oh, people thought public safety facilities was way too high at 243 million, so it didn't pass at all. That's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. But, so you'd like the police headquarters by itself?
If we could. I just don't understand having city maintenance facility. I know the bond council had things. I don't understand having a line item for 3.9 million and then having ones like 50 million lumped in together. I just, I'm concerned that we risk not getting some of these passed with these massive numbers for people who just see a massive number and are like, nope, when they haven't been educated.
Okay. All right, hold on. Councilmember Williams.
I agree with what Councilwoman Prince just said, and I think, I'll speak for myself at least, but I think where Councilmember Riccadelli was coming from was any individual project in excess of 50 million, meaning the police station or the training center, not a category like residential street and alley repairs separate from arterial concrete. Like, I'd rather have just one streets and alleys item. I'd like to whittle it down to 300 million, but still, one streets and alleys item, but for any individual project that is over 50 million, like a police headquarters, training center, and then all the fire station work. I'm good with the total amounts, and I'm good going with the bonds for them now, but I agree with breaking those large items out.
Okay. All right.
And if I might add, I was also, that was better stated than I stated it, but I would also say the Parkway Services and Fleet Phase One is a $54 million kind of standalone item. That's a similar scope of projects, so I would add that into that list, you know, just giving the residents choices.
For clarification, making sure, so combined items like arterial, concrete, street reconstruction overlay do not count. These are individual facility items. So it's Parkway Service, Police Headquarters, and it is the fleet, fleet maintenance and the police training. Those four stand out as individual items that you would like to see as individual propositions, correct?
That's right. I thought the Parkway Service and Fleet Phase One, we had it hitting 54 together, because as I understand it, that's all on that same tract of land, right?
It's correct, but you can't move the fleet without the park side of things because you have no place to put it.
Exactly, because it's taking up that land.
Correct. So I would say that's one project.
Yeah, that's, I was viewing that as one project.
Okay. So we have four of those that are 50 million and above, correct?
I think so.
Okay. Just making sure I'm tracking along here. Just, okay. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Maria, I'm sorry. Did you have something?
Well, I guess instead of going line item, Mr. Mayor, I think, well, now that I've heard everybody's starting to talk, I'm getting it, but what I was going to suggest is that instead of going line by line with what we are agreeing to reduce or move over to in the future, is maybe just agree to, like, you know, have the staff go back and reduce it to the amount that we're comfortable in presenting to the bond referendum. That's all.
I appreciate you saying that, but I'm not sure I can get there, just, but I think we're making some headway. I think we're really, we've knocked off the majority of the bonds right now, so all that's... Rick, I'm sorry, I was going to let you, you had something to say.
Oh, that's okay. I think we passed by. I was just saying, with Councilmember Horn, I really appreciate the statement made where he's coming from, but the one thing I did want to point out again is that I would rather have something and not need it than need it and not have it. So remember, all we're asking for is the authority to issue those bonds. So the fact that we have that authority, if the police station sells and we get a great thing, that we could always still do that and never issue the 51 million. That's all I'm saying. I just think it's very important that we do that project, or we have the capability to do that project, however that comes about, and not have the capability to do it.
Okay. Appreciate that. So, Rick, you got something?
Clarification. I understand the need, and I appreciate the need. I was just trying to help us get to a point where we didn't have that sticker shock to the voter who's not going to come to our meetings, you know what I mean? Who's not going to take the energy and time to see the work that our staff has done, that didn't take the time to see the needs analysis. I'm just trying to help us get to that area there.
Okay.
And so, really, that's where my position was.
All right. So we're at Parks and Rec, Proposition C. I will tell you one thing, Mr. Riccadelli. I played pony baseball on Shell Park, so yes, it has been there a long time. So I can, I can understand your logic, but I can also tell you, it's very old, so it could definitely use an upgrade. But again, these are areas that, you know, I'm willing to hear if the, there's a consensus on council to do anything or go with the 60 million. Rick?
Again, Mr. Mayor, again, when I made my original statement, particularly Hall Park, if we're fortunate and the voters vote for both the headquarters and the police station, we're looking at a four-year timeline that that whole area is just going to be torn up from an infrastructure perspective. And I would like to push the Hall Park finish out, if you will, to the next bond because that's when we'll probably need and start looking at the work.
Okay.
But that was my only reasoning for that.
I would reduce that to 15. I support, I support that, and I would also support Councilman Riccadelli's of removing or reducing the land acquisitions under parks to help us get to the 600 number.
Councilman Riccadelli, can you reiterate your land acquisition numbers that you proposed?
Yes, I was going to decrease that, if it's okay with the council, from 20. Need to 10, because what we've got currently is 15 for Levon Farms. You know, we absolutely need a park there because of what's going on in the Oak Point area, but, you know, I thought the precedent of, I think I saw 10 million in authority for the Bruce Glasscock part. I think that's already a very high-end park. Windhaven Meadows was 10 million for, you know, or I guess that was the finish out, but anyway. You know, so I think we can do a great park, negotiate with the developer for 10 million, and then there's 5 million, you know, in there for kind of unidentified possible future land. And, you know, I would take that out at this time, just because we are trying to get down closer to the 600 million, and I think something where we don't even have an identified use for it yet, where we don't know how we would spend it, is something that, you know, we might be able to look at, look at that and maybe look at it again in 2029.
No, it's, I think that's down to 50 at the 50, because the total for...
Take out a Hall Park, right? And then 10 out of the...
Correct. Yes.
So it'd be, it'd be 40.
Yeah.
Okay. Fleet operations, is everybody okay with that? I'm sorry. Excuse me.
With the park or the fleet?
I was park and rec, bit 40. And then fleet operations, we, I mean, Shelby, go ahead.
Oh, everything Councilman Riccadelli just said.
Well, and Rick, you were talking about, you visited that, and it's critical, and I've seen it several times, and most of our fire trucks don't fit into the bays, and they're too big. So that's a real critical public facility, but I think somebody was talking about the facility... but, I think somebody was talking about the facilities maintenance, land acquisition, was that you?
That, that, that was me, I guess, I was, I was, several of these things, but so here's the thing about the, this is Proposition F, but the facilities maintenance acquisition is, basically, we're removing money from one account to another, we're buying the, we're already buying this land with the land bank money, and then, because we would be using it for a maintenance facility, we would be reimbursing the land bank with these bond funds, the point I was making is that we have money in the land bank, and if we, if we sell bonds and pay interest, we incur debt, just to repay the land bank, then we've got money sitting in the land bank that we don't have a use for yet, but all the while we're paying interest, because we, we wanted to move it from one account to another, we wanted, we wanted essentially to use a bond to repay the land bank, so we would be paying interest on money that's sitting there in the land bank, would be the net effect of that, and I think rather than pay interest on money that we don't have an identified use for yet, you know, this kind of goes back to the 5 million of Parks land that didn't have an identified use yet, I think it would be, it would be better to just, you know, repay the land bank at some future date, when we have an identified use for those funds in the land bank, rather than paying interest before we do.
And Councilman Rick Adeli and I did have a discussion, and, and what he says is accurate, I, I just want to reiterate to council, that the, part of your purpose of the land bank was to have funds available for opportunities, we are close to the top of the use of the land bank, so your opportunity availability for those funds will be impacted by that, if you are not repaying it, so those are, are elements of that, and again, if, once it's exhausted, we won't have the opportunity to, to do that, so it's just, again, it's, it's however council prefers to, to move forward, but I do think that if you've committed those funds and we exhaust those funds, then again, should an opportunity come up, those, those funds will not be available, and I, I think part of the purpose for the land bank was discussion of replenishing it through the repayment of, of that land.
So, are, are we talking about, are we still talking about C?
We're talking about D, actually.
I think this is, I think this might be F, on the maintenance, oh, oh, sorry, that's-
Both, yeah.
It's both, quite frankly.
Okay, C and D?
No, D and F.
D and F, and if we take the 3.9 out, then that's all that F is.
That's right, and then we would also have one fewer proposition, so as we split a couple other things out, as we mentioned, we would not be having, you know, so many bond propositions on there.
I know.
I'm okay with taking that one out.
Where are we at? Well, we're, we're, how do you stand on that, on F? Shelby?
I'm good on F. We're taking it out, yeah.
You okay, Rick?
The Public Works, if, I, I'll leave that to march folks, if it's not absolutely necessary at this moment, and we can cover it another way, I'm good with taking it out, but as everybody's talking about, I mean, being able to maintain our equipment and everything that we have in this city that provides the services is, is critical, so as long as we're not affecting that, I'm okay with it.
As I understand from City Manager Israelson, we, we are doing that, we're already doing it with, acquiring that land with land bank funds, it's just a question of whether we would issue debt to pay back the land bank, and my concern was, while I do support replenishing the land bank, and having that money available for an opportunity, I don't know that we want to be paying interest on the money that's sitting in the land bank and actually take out debt to do that, but I, as I understand it, we're going to do this facility, we need it, for sure.
Maria?
So, I, 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 I guess I don't understand, I mean, why can't we let the voters decide? I mean, this is a separate item, is, at the last of the proposition, is $3.9 million versus all the other ones, and we're talking about, we're, we're talking about critical items that, you know, I think the vote, the residents should make that decision, I mean, it's already separate, so, anyway.
But the problem with the way this is created, it makes it sound like that 3.9 million is going to be for the city maintenance facility, not for the purchase of the land. Right, so like, to, to the point that Councilmember Horn has made, if you're just going to the voter, and the voter is just seeing this on the ballot, and they're not actually doing all their research beforehand, this doesn't, this looks like Proposition F is to build the facility, and what, if I'm understanding our conversation right, that is not what this 3.9 million is for.
Then it's more on the description and the proposition language, rather than taking it off because we don't need it, I mean, this is, I mean, everything that's been proposed was, went through the advisory board of our, you know, the citizens who, you know, who put this together and made the recommendation, I just don't think we could just go in and, and if and that on it, I don't mind if we want to try to get to a certain dollar amount, for example, 600 million.
But it was, if you look at what they did, it was listed as facilities maintenance, facility land acquisition, 3.9, and it was one of the lowest rates.
Like, like I said, if we want to try to get to a certain number, I'm fine, and, you know, having, you know, go through line item for the staff to get to, to whatever, but, I mean, one area of Proposition F, I mean, this is, this is all by itself, I mean, I think the residents should have the, the, the choice of deciding whether or not they want it or not, you know, instead of our own personal opinion, whether or not we should put it on there.
I get it, I just think it looks misleading this way to people, so I, I just don't like-
Okay. Shelby?
Uh, yes, I agree with Councilmember Prince, the way it appears on the bond item, it says a facility, residents will be led to believe that it's a facility that's being constructed, leading them to think that there's a need for such a facility, and yes, while an individual bond item is up to the voters to vote on, the, the Bond Referendum Citizens' Advisory Committee, BRCAC, thank you, did not present us a whittled down list, they took the entire list that was presented by staff and simply prioritized it, so I understand that the 600 million we're trying to get to collectively is a somewhat arbitrary number, but so was the 700 million that was given to the committee, that down from, I think, 1.4 billion?
Six.
1.6 billion, which may have been an arbitrary number by itself, so, that's why I'm in favor of taking this off, is because it is for the land, and because we're trying to just basically shuffle our assets around, but I'm trying to get down, get the total amount of interest that we're paying on our debt down as it is.
So, quickly, Mayor and Council, and kind of working through that, one of the things I am looking at is, is to what y'all are talking about as far as facilities and, and what we might be able to group together, we can go back and talk with Bob Dransfeld about trying to put some of these together, with the understanding that those over 50 million dollars would be their own standalone facility, so we can look to see if some of these smaller ones, but if you'd rather not have these embedded in there, just because the purpose of it doesn't match with what you're trying to do, and it needs to be pushed out for future years, or, you know, look for other opportunities, I mean, candidly, Council, there's, there's not funds just sitting around that we're looking to do this, we, we would have already done it had, had we had that, but if we want to push it out for four years, again, that, that's the council prerogative to be able to do that, and I, I know that we're just trying to balance to a number that we think the community can, can accept, but I think we can go back to our bond attorney and talk to him about some of these groups, and see if we can't collapse some of these together, and then look at those other individual items, so if you're concerned about that, I think we can work on that.
Alright, so finally, is the library facilities, I think outside of that, we, we, we kind of agreed on everything? Are we okay with that? I, I, I think Anthony, Anthony, you had, I think Par was, was one that you wanted to-
Yes, Mayor, thank you, so, you know, I, I hope, I hope the staff will not be mad at me next time I go in there, as I frequently do, I use Par Library very frequently, and I love it, that's actually why I think it could wait, because I, I was candidly surprised to see it on here, because I think it's in such excellent shape, and so, I, I mean, it's, it's consistently my needs, my kids' needs, you know, my wife's needs, you know, we, so anyway, and, and I, I would say, you know, while certainly it has more needs than Par, we could look at taking Haggard off as well, because again, we've got 20, these are 20-year bonds, we've got five libraries, so if you divide 20 by five, that's four, so if every four years, during every bond cycle, we tackle one library, then, you know, over every 20-year bond cycle, we'll refresh every library, and so to me, I would say, let's do the oldest, Schimmel Finneg, this time, and then Haggard next time, Par in 2033, and so on and so forth, so that, you know, every bond cycle, we, we refresh one of our five libraries.
Shelby?
I really like Councilman Rick Adeli's suggestion, but one of my questions as well regarding the bond item for libraries relates to the consent item that I asked to be pulled for individual consideration tonight, which was, so this bond item for the Schimmel Finneg renovation is almost $2 million, but on the consent agenda tonight, we had almost $400,000 for shelf replacement at Schimmel Finneg, and I'm wondering, well, I, I went to Schimmel Finneg on the way here to look at the shelves, they're a bit scratched up, but otherwise look serviceable, but I'm wondering whether that sort of thing is contemplated in the Schimmel Finneg remodel, and if we're going to be paying 400,000 now to replace the shelves that we're going to replace in a couple of years, anyway.
Libby, would you mind? Thank you.
Sorry you had to come down early, Libby.
Am I allowed to touch this?
Yeah, just don't scream into it.
I'm short. Good evening, question?
Yes, so, on the consent agenda tonight was an item for almost $400,000 for shelf replacement at Schimmel Finneg Library, but then we're talking about the bond item to remodel Schimmel Finneg, maybe, what was the word you, yeah, remodel Schimmel Finneg, and the question is, in the remodel, almost $2 million, was replacement of the shelving contemplated in that?
It was not part of that, so if I can speak to just the shelving piece first, so every budget year, we share what our projected couple of years, what are we looking at in needs for our buildings or resources, and Schimmel Finneg came up a few years ago in our bond discussions, in our budget discussions, but there's no funding, budget made us aware that there was some potential funding, but we didn't have capacity and facilities to do the work, so we've waited a couple of years, and now the two have kind of, we have the funding and the capacity, that's why we're asking for the shelving right now.
I see.
For the bond, for Schimmel Finneg, it's more the, the paint and the, the paint, the carpet, and some furniture type of things, it's not shelving.
Okay, um, thank you for that, that helps, and it actually emphasizes the notion of doing a holistic remodel once every four years for each of the libraries, so that we're not kind of patchworking the work that ultimately needs to be done at all of them, a little shelving here, a little paint there, but doing a, a full proper remodel periodically.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Libby.
Okay.
My pleasure. Any other questions?
No, thank you. So, if-
Can I provide an update real quick?
Yeah.
I've been trying to track this, Council, to make sure that I'm getting it right, and I hope to read it off to you to make sure that, again, things are, are being explicit, and I hate to do that, but it's, we only get one more shot at this, now we got to print it out and bring it back to you for the community to see, so let me, let me see if I can get this correct, and I'm just going down the list so that, that y'all see, and talking about adjustments, so the first adjustment is Hall Park, and Hall Park, we're going to push out to 2029, so that's completely coming off the list, next is miscellaneous, and we are completely taking that out from the traffic improvements, the next item is the Haggard Library remodel, it is coming off and going to a future year, if I'm going too fast, y'all tell me to slow down. The next thing coming down is land acquisitions, and land acquisitions, we are shifting to $10 million in total, regardless of whether it's Levon or anything else, it's just $10 million, so it basically took that 20 and cut it in half, and so, we're just going to say it's $10 million for land acquisitions. So far, I'm getting nods from a few folks, so, so far, we're doing okay? Alright, just making sure, alright, and then the next thing coming down is going to be the Par Library remodel, we're bumping out again, since we're doing one library this year, downtown right-of-way infrastructure is going, we're going to look towards TIF funds, to see if that is possible to program that, sidewalks, we are going to look to capital maintenance, to see what we can funding in for sidewalks, facilities maintenance, facility land acquisition, we are going to bump out for those four years, screen wall, we're going to look at capital maintenance, alley reconstruction, we're looking at capital maintenance.
And get, what's the total?
I just want to make sure, I'm looking around, everybody, did I get everything right? Anybody missing anything material, Councilman Horn?
Yeah, go ahead, hold on, I got you, Rick, go.
Thanks, I have a question, if we're going to be doing a library every four years now, requesting bonding funds to remodel that, then when I look at the library, I mean, what we're talking about now, what Libby was presenting, was basically paint and carpet and tile and furniture and stuff, if what we're looking at to remodel an entire library, do we need to look at more from the mechanical systems, the plumbing, the engineering, on that sort of thing, because I'm, I'm looking here that we had, you know, 2 million here, a million here, another million and a half here, should we look at that, if we're going to keep that library, and that's the only one we're going to do in four years, should we consider bumping that value up? I know we're trying to reduce the number, but, you know, what, what are we going to look, what's that going to look like in another four years? That's what I'm getting at on that type.
So, go ahead, Councilman.
Hold on, let me get you, alright, go.
We're at your mercy, Mayor, that's one of the things I was going to say, since we've got this consent item for shelving for Schimmel Finneg, maybe bump up the Schimmel Finneg bond budget here to encompass a more proper remodel, I think that's what you were referencing, Councilman Horn, right?
Well, finding proper is, again, I, I don't know how to-
I'm just looking at from, from a total, from a plumbing and mechanical systems, to, to everything, electronics, to high-speed internet, everything that's associated, this is just beyond what we're looking at with regards just to paint and carpet.
So, Councilman, let me, if you don't mind interject real quick, so, Councilman, I, I hear where you're coming from, and I, I think that that's part of what we look to do, and this becomes a little bit of a blend between our, our bond dollars and our capital maintenance dollars, and replacing some of those mechanical that we have on a scheduled program, so we have roofs on a, a 10-year cycle, we have some of these elements on, you know, replacement cycles that we worked through to, to your point, so as far as what's included in this particular aspect, Paul, do you have a, I know that there, you have the list, but as far as the, the, maybe more enhanced or more comprehensive update, is there anything that you can add to, add color to that?
Sure, good evening, Paul Kuns, a Facilities Division Manager, I can tell you on what's on Schimmel Finning, or I can tell you what's in all three libraries, what we have included. For all three libraries, we have three large study pods and three small pods, that's the furniture part of this that you see, in support of that, we have the electrical connections to all those study pods, all of the libraries have restrooms that, let's just say, need a lot of help, they all need remodeling, they're all very old, and so for Shimi, Schimmel Finneg, we have four large lib, um, restrooms and three small restrooms that we're going to get a complete, basically gut it down to studs, refresh the plumbing, everything, paint throughout Schimmel Finneg, and all new carpet, and to speak to Mr. Williams, we constantly will go behind underneath the shelving, depending on the age of it, we have technology, we can lift the shelving up and replace the carpet, so depending, they don't necessarily have to match the timing of each other, so we do that quite often, did you guys want to hear what's also in Haggard and, and in Par as well?
I think the focus is on a single library today, Paul.
Okay.
Alright.
Any other questions?
Anthony, did you have?
Oh, thank you, I, I was just going to say, you know, if, if there is more work that was anticipated on Schimmel Finneg in a near-future bond package, I would be supportive of adding that into this bond package, you know, obviously not making the number bigger than it previously was with three libraries in there, but with the idea of, of kind of, you know, of a comprehensive refresh, but, you know, focusing on long-term items like the ones you were talking about, because, as you talked about City Manager Israelson, we have the capital maintenance fund already for routine maintenance, and bond funds are typically for things that last 20 years or longer, that are going to, you know, kind of be, you know, a real sort of capital improvement to, to the library. that are going to, you know, kind of be, you know, a real sort of capital improvement to the library. So, but I mean, if there are other things that were anticipated for '29 or '33 for Schimmel Finneg, let's do it all now.
Its roof is less than five years old, so we don't need them there. So I think we're okay.
Perfect. All right, so is everybody okay with, with what Mark just ran through? Okay. Are you okay, Rick? Sorry. Go ahead.
We're talking 52 million bucks that we've reduced, so.
Yeah. That's exactly right. All right.
So do y'all want to know the total?
Yeah, Rick already told me.
What did he say?
Roughly 52 million dollars less.
It is, yes. So it's 647,911,000 dollars.
Okay.
So.
So not quite, that looks pretty.
Not quite. But we will work with our bond council to make sure that we, we work on breaking those out, see what we can consolidate. We'll bring back the final language, the final project list. But council, thank you. This is, this is huge to be able to take to the community. It is very meaningful. I know this is not easy, but appreciate all your work towards this.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you, staff, for, for all the work you put into this. Let's move to consent agenda. Oh, I'm so sorry, Maria. Yeah. Okay, my apologies. I meant to do this at proclamation time. Maria? I think you have something to say.
Yes. Happy Chinese New Year.
Yay.
There you go. So I have a statement for every year I do this. And I figured this is a really good insert for something happy.
Yeah.
So Chinese New Year or Lunar New Year is going to be this Wednesday. It's January 29th. It will be the new year for the year of the wooden green snake. Wood, green snake. So in many parts of Taiwan, we call those born in the year of the snake as quote-unquote "little dragons." Why? It's because many mothers try to get pregnant during the year of the dragon, and they miss the date. So they end up having little dragons, which is born in the year of the snake. So you'll find a lot of the young kids who are born, especially boys, who are born in the year of the snake, they're called, literally, their nickname is Little Dragon. So also another interesting tidbit. Many people have asked me why Chinese New Year is always, you know, now politically correct to say Lunar New Year, but why is it always later than January 1st? Well, let me just tell you, the Chinese New Year has always been around and has always been in existence since 1912. It wasn't until after 1912 that the insertion or the incorporation of January 1st, being the new year, came into existence in, in the Asian countries. So why is it Chinese New Year rather than just a regular Lunar New Year? Because it's technically not, it's not lunar calendar. It's the strict basis for lunar calendars actually practiced in Islam. But the Chinese New Year is incorporation, the lunar calendar and the sun calendar, and incorporate it into the four seasons. So they do a little bit of adjustment each year in order to incorporate all the calendars to make sure that it, it sort of reflects the agricultural conditions, reflect the seasons, as well as what is necessary. All right. So the Lunar New Year is the, I guess based on the moon, is actually only 29.5 days. So the sun calendar is 30.2 days. That's why when we, when we use the sun calendar, every four years, they have like a leap year, they add one more day. Well, in the moon calendar, they can't just add one more day because there's technically 11 days difference between the sun and the moon. So they actually add a month, an entire month, every two or three months, every two or three years. So that's the reason why, when you look at it, the Chinese count, the Chinese New Year is always about 15 days to 30 days after the January 1st New Year. All right. So many of us know that the Chinese has a tradition of giving out red envelopes with money to children, looks like the ones that we have here. And so a little legend, the legend says that there's a monster that's called year, quote-unquote "year," that comes out at the end of old year and harasses children and elders while they're sleeping. So the monster is afraid of bright colors, bright lights, and loud noises. So it is customary for people to stay awake to guard against the attack of the monster year on the eve of the new year. To keep themselves awake, the people gather their friends and families to play music, eat, drink, and talk together inside the house. Outside the house, they set off firecrackers, bang the gong, laugh and yell to keep the energy of the house high. Well, unfortunately, it is very difficult to keep children awake. So one of the mothers, back in the old days, decided to give her children some coins to play with and to keep them awake. Well, the children tried. They played with the coins, and then they got tired. And the children, then they splashed the coins on top of their pillow, and then they went to bed. Well, the monster year came and looked at the coins, and it was really bright. So, you know, they got scared, and the monster went away. So therein lies the reason why children start getting money during Chinese New Year because, you know, they give them coins to put under, under their pillows to make sure they're safe. All right. So that's how it came about. We want to keep the children safe. We want to keep the elders safe, keep the war off the evil spirits before the end of the new year. Red envelopes became a part of tradition because Chinese people love the color red. In the old days, it is considered to be one of the most difficult color to dye and the most expensive to purchase. The color red stands second to the importance of the imperial yellow that the emperors wear. So red signifies success, prosperity, and luck. So if you're wearing red, that means you're, you're going somewhere in life. Giving red envelopes filled with money are a symbol of giving good wishes to those who receive it. So the Chinese New Year is 15 days. So starting from January 29th, that's where you count 15 days. It is said that those elders and young children who can make it through the new year will have survived the monster, not before. So it is not safe until the 15 days is over. So look into your elderly parents and your neighbors. Keep your children close. Stick a red envelope under their pillow to whirr off the evil spirit and have a safe and prosperous new year. Happy Chinese New Year.
Yay, thank you. Well done, Maria.
Thank you.
Okay, we're, we're going to stay where you're at, Lisa, but we're, we're going to go back and just confirm with everybody the propositions and, and make sure everybody's in agreement on, on how they're categorized. So we've got Streets at 342. We got B as Police Headquarters, 155. We have C, PD Training Facility, 51. We have D, Public Safety Facilities, 37. We have E, Parkway Services and Fleet, 54. F, Municipal Facilities. That's okay. I'm getting ahead. I'm reading fast. Can you do them? Okay. Now, we got... No, yeah, a couple more. That was at C. We're, I'm at F, Municipal Facilities. Does that come, do you, did you combine that? Do we combine that with libraries?
I was looking for libraries and everything.
Yeah. Okay. So F would be Libraries, 1.8. And then Parks, is that what you got?
Parks, yeah.
Parks at, at 40. Yeah, we can put, you want to swap Parks and Libraries?
No, I was saying, it should be specific, say, Library or say, Schimmel Finneg.
Schimmel Finneg, okay. And so it'd be A through G. A through G is what it'll end up being, or something in that.
Heard 342 on Streets, which I thought, I thought that was the number we started with tonight, and then we took out Downtown Right of Way, and I thought screening walls and...
You're correct.
You did. We, we, we're just trying to categorize.
Oh, oh, okay. I, I thought we were saying that was the number we were sticking with.
You did, you're right. So we'll get, the number, you're right.
But basically, the proposition, so we'll, we'll, we'll get the numbers correct, but the propositions will be A is Streets, B is the Police Headquarters and Public Safety Communications, C is the Police Training Center, D is Public Sa, other Public Safety Facilities, so it's going to be...
Fire, yeah.
E would be the Parkway Fleet Building, F would be Schimmel Finneg Library, and then G would be Parks. And I think we have everything covered at that point.
And we can be, be more descriptive if need be. We'll get Bob's recommendation on that.
We'll get it out to y'all ahead of time.
Okay.
Are y'all comfortable with that? Are y'all comfortable with that order? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Consent agenda. Did Rick leave?
Yes.
In Casey, so nobody else can leave.
The consent agenda. The consent agenda will be acted upon in one motion and contains items which are routine and typically non-controversial. Items may be removed from this agenda for individual discussion by a council member, the city manager, or any citizen. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests.
All right. Do I have a motion? What, I got you. Go ahead.
Motion to approve the consent agenda except for item number, is it K?
KDI.
KDI.
KDNI, yeah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Say it again.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve the consent agenda with the exception of K, D, and I. Please vote.
Looks like Casey's gone as well.
Chief, yeah, so we're down to, this is all you got.
All right.
Okay. Motion passes seven to zero. Seven.
Well then, let, let's redo that.
Yeah, I don't...
I think I hit a wrong button.
Yeah, Casey didn't vote. Rick's gone. All right. Do you want to vote again?
Yeah, let me get this back in here.
Okay. Let's try it again.
Sorry, my apologies.
No, it's okay. New technology. Okay, please vote. Here we go. Shelby, did you vote? There you go. Okay, we're good.
And I'm gonna just...
Now that should be six.
And vote.
Okay, motion passes six to zero. Terrific. Okay, item, you want to go alphabetical?
Sure.
Let's do D.
Item D, to approve the purchase of Schimmel Finneg shelving product, project in the estimated amount of 383,987 from Libra Tech Corporation through an existing contract and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Okay.
Say that three times real fast, Lisa. Based on the discussion we just had and based on my observation of the shelving, it's, like I said, it's scratched up, but it's perfectly serviceable. I would like to defer this item until the actual remodel of Schimmel Finneg. I don't know whether I need to make a motion to table for a year indefinitely or deny for now. What would be?
Counsel, I think, I think denial for now is the cleaner version, and then we can bring it back to you in, in future, at a future meeting, just understanding the, the direction of counsel. So not knowing when that, when that project is going to take place, I think that's a little bit easier. These are funds that we do have. I think Paul, is it the 2021 bond referendum that these are still bond funds from? So we will be holding those forward. So just to be aware of that as well.
Well, if that's the...
No, go ahead.
I was just going to ask Mr. Mayor if I, if I could ask...
Yeah, go ahead.
Libby a question. Thank you. Because I will, I will tell you, continuing the, the weird synchronicity of our minds, I actually emailed Mark about this item for the same reason because we have a, we have the 25 Schimmel Finneg bond issuance, and then we have this item separately. The, the response that came back was that essentially there, there's no, there's no efficiency to be gained by rolling this into the, the remodel for the 25 bond package, is there?
That's what I understand, yes. Because the, there's also, well, yes, I'll just leave it with that. I don't think there's any efficiency, from what I understand, from facilities in doing that with the bond.
So I guess actually, this may be a Paul question. I'm sorry.
I'll answer what I can.
It sounds like maybe that's a facilities question.
But I think the, the bonds have already been sold. Plus, we're just looking at the higher price.
Yeah, because I was going to say, we're already paying interest, I think, on these ones because these are 2021 bonds that we, that we issued in the last issuance, right? Or, or no?
Yes, sir. That is, that is true.
Okay, and, and so I, I actually asked the same question for the same reason as Councilmember Williams, but if there are, i- is that correct, Paul, that there are no efficiencies to be gained by waiting?
No, that was my comment earlier of we go underneath library shelving. We have ways to lift it up and replace carpet. There is really no efficiencies based on what is scoped currently for Schimmel Finneg to defer this. All you're doing is costing us escalation.
Okay, so, so there's cost escalation and interest in the meantime, and there, there's no, that replacing the shelving now is not going to cause any issues with the remodel where it would have been better to wait?
Not as we have it currently scoped, no, sir.
Okay. Okay, so, well, I guess Councilmember Williams has, has a motion. I was just going to suggest that, as much as I asked the same question for the same reason because I, I liked the idea of rolling it all into one project, the fact that we're already paying interest on this debt, that there could be cost escalation if we wait, and that there's no efficiency to be gained by rolling this into the remodel for the 25 bond package makes me think that it might be better to move forward with this now and then, you know, and, and then do the rest of the work after the 25 bond.
That makes sense. I would like to understand the expected life of the new shelving because, I mean, there's a lot of shelving in there, but $400,000 is a lot.
Yeah.
So the original shelving is about 40-plus years old. I mean, it's, it's held up.
There you go.
Par Library would be our newest library at 23, 24 years. This aligns with the shelving that all the newer libraries have. So the ability to swap or share things is really helpful in terms of extending life for everybody, actually, across the system.
How do you mean swap or share things?
It's the same shelving units, so we can share between buildings if we need to or if something breaks. A lot of shelving at times gets bent or broken or just well-loved over the years, so we, we share.
Oh, okay, I wouldn't have thought that.
Yeah, we share all things in the libraries.
Okay, and this one wasn't required to go out for competitive bid, and I'm, I have no idea what the going rate for a library shelving is. Any, any kind of reasonable comparison to what we've spent in other libraries on similar shelving?
I don't have those numbers right now, sorry. The last library we would have done would have been Davis Library with the bond money.
Because of the price tag, this one jumped out at me, which is why I looked into it this closely. Since, okay, I, I understand the rationale behind not denying it now, but I would like to better understand the, the cost involved in the shelving and understanding that the last shelving has lasted 40-some-odd years. I have a reasonable expectation that the new shelving will last, but I would request to table this to the next meeting to just get some better price information.
Sorry, Maria.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, if you look at the background, does say that the quote was on January 9, 2025, and the project include replacement, it goes on and says that the lowest responsive and responsible quote was submitted by Libra Tech Corporation.
There is only one submitter.
There were a total...
There were a total of four vendors notified of this project, only they gave a quote.
Right.
So technically, there are four bits. We asked four people to come in and give a quote, and only one person decided to do so. So I, I wouldn't consider this just an individual, one, one quote. The other three have basically decided they're not going to. And that was the lowest responsive, responsible quote. I, I, I mean, if we have the money, I, I, you know.
It's part of the bond, so.
So anyway.
If I could, if I may, Mayor, I was just gonna say. Second to the motion to table, I, I will tell you, I, I have had the experience where you come to the meeting having thought, as, as Councilmember Williams did, I'm gonna move to table or deny based on rolling it into the remodel, and then when information came out that said, you know, ma- maybe there's no benefit to rolling it into the comprehensive remodel, you know, you might not get past that in your thought process, having planned to come to the meeting and do that. And so then other questions may not have yet been answered, and so I would support tabling it to the next meeting to, to get Councilmember Williams' questions answered, and I don't think we'll lose anything by tabling for two weeks.
Rick?
Just for clarification, how many shelves are we talking about? How many linear feet of shelves? Do you know, ballpark?
Does it say on there?
Yep, simple answer is all of them.
Oh, there's all of them. Okay, and that's installed cost?
Yes, sir.
And are they going to be taking away the old shelves?
Yes, sir.
Wow, that's a bargain.
That's a bargain, no matter how you look at it.
Let's, let's go ahead and vote on the, the tabling. I have a motion, a second. Okay, so I, I have a motion as, in a second to table item D. Please vote. Okay, motion is three, three, so it fails. Do you have another motion? Oh, hold on, I, she has to go back. Okay. They probably failed. Maria?
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to approve. Okay, please vote to approve item D. Motion passes five to one. Okay. Next item is item K. Oh, I, excuse me, I'm. I need some help. Sorry.
You're doing good.
Item I.
Item I, to accept the findings and opinions of the annual audit and authorizing the city manager, or in his absence, the Director of Finance, to publish the results thereof and providing an effective date.
Who pulled this? Anthony, did you?
I, I thought, oh, sorry, this is the audit. I thought we were doing K next. Okay, yeah.
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry, I thought we were on the, on the ordinance.
I was trying to go alphabetical, and I.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Yeah, no, I, that, that, I, I got mixed around. But so, okay, well then, so the only reason I pulled this is because Councilmember Williams and I are on the finance committee, so we had the opportunity to meet with our excellent finance department, including Denise Tackey, Allison Freelo, and, and the great, you know, the great leadership there at the, at the finance department, and, and, and also our outside auditors. And here, honestly, the same thing that we hear every year, which is that we have the best finance department in the world. I'm paraphrasing their worlds, but, their words, but that's basically what they say. You know, we always get a, an unmodified opinion, which is the best you can do. Plano is always the first to get their ducks in a row every year, and I believe we are on track for, what, our forty-fourth year in a row to win a GFOA award. So I just wanted to compliment our finance team on y'all's excellent work. Thank you so much. Wanted to report on the, on the excellent opinion from the outside auditor, and with that, I will move to approve this item.
I'll second, and ditto everything Councilman Ricky Deli just said. Y'all have my deepest appreciation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Congratulations. All right, I have a motion, a second, to approve item I. Please vote. All right, motion passes six to zero. Item K.
Item K, an ordinance to amend section six dash four-nine-one-two political signs, non-commercial purpose signs of Division Three permitted signs of Article seven, or, excuse me, Article twelve temporary signs of Chapter Six building and building regulation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Plano, and to amend regulations for political signs, non-commercial purpose signs at strictly, at publicly owned active polling locations, and providing a repealer clause, a severability clause, a savings clause, a penalty clause, a publication clause, and an effective date.
Okay. This was, this was pulled by a citizen. Oh, there you are. All right. And I, I just wanted to, we, we talked about this in November, was that right, Sosa? Okay, so we, we talked about this and talked about our ability to enforce it, and, and without liability of lawsuits, and so Paige Memm's, our city attorney, would, I would like you to tell the opinion that, that we've received from, from you and staff.
All right, is all of council comfortable with that? Yeah, okay. So we had initially raised some concerns under Supreme Court case law about regulating the number of signs, because when we're doing it on city property, in order to enforce that, we would have to read the signs, which creates First Amendment concerns. And so we have had a letter from an attorney for someone that had signs at the properties, also raising these concerns, and so council expressed the desire to create the ordinance to be more legally defensible, and that way we remove those restrictions on numbers, but we're gonna keep the requirements for size, and we're also not gonna allow them right by the curb. We'll still have the area designated by Sosa's department for which you have to place the signs behind that line.
Thank you. Thank you. And with that being said, I'll, I'll take a motion.
Motion to.
Did you?
I have other comments.
I'm sorry. Oh, go ahead, please. I'm sorry. Mr. Stafford, please come up.
Okay, in September of twenty-twenty-one, this is John Stafford, fourteen oh one Harvest Glen Drive. In September of twenty-twenty-one, you guys fulfilled a campaign promise. And I stood here and I thanked each and every one of you for fulfilling that campaign promise and passing the signed ordinance. So imagine my shock and surprise when, come November in this last general election, we're no longer enforcing the signed ordinance that you all had passed in November of twenty-twenty-one. A signed ordinance that is in line with what Plano ISD requires at their locations, what Collin College requires at their locations, and is even more free than what Allen allows at its locations, because Allen only allows four at its city locations. Same with Allen ISD, they only allow four signs per candidate at their, at their sign locations. And so, all of a sudden, Plano has gotten rid of the ordinance, and I was apoplectic at that. I was angry at that, and most of you got text messages and phone calls from me afterwards because of that. Okay? Because of the non-enforcement of this, as a campaign operative and a precinct chair, I heard from numerous people that they felt scared and intimidated when they were going to vote, because we had these big walls of signs up there that were just scary and intimidating. It's like, okay, one side had thirty, forty signs per candidate there, and the other side followed the law and only planned for five signs, and that's what they got in every single location. So when we get down into state law, state law two-five-nine-oh-oh-two allows a limitation of one sign in certain locations, okay? State law two-five-nine-oh-oh-three allows cities to create their own limitations on signs. The First Amendment complaint that you had, that you're expressing, Paige, okay? Yes, everybody gets to have speech if they have five signs at a, at a polling location. That, everybody is allowed their speech. But there is also a Fourteenth Amendment, which seems to get ignored in these, which is the equal protection under the laws, and that we have, everybody, if we have five signs per candidate, that's equal protection for everybody. So I am asking you to reject this, because this ordinance sends us right back to where we were in twenty-twenty, before the, before that amendment was passed. Please, please, just reject the, reject this thing, because even worse, the worst part of this particular ordinance is it allows the walls of signs. Okay, they can only be forty-two inches, but we can still have the walls of signs there, and that's an even worse state, because we put.
All right, Johnny. Appreciate it. Yeah, please.
All right, so Mayor and Council, as you know, from all the advice you've been given over the years, we can regulate the limit, to limit the number of signs on private property, because I can just count signs. Sosa's group can just count signs. I don't have to read those. To enforce those limitations on private property, which I believe is the state law reference that he was referring to. But when it comes to public property, it's a different equation, and so, you know, others may have those. I don't advise those cities, but our goal for the City of Plano is to mitigate legal risk, and especially when we think there's an inability or problem with defending the city, and that helps keep taxes down, that helps keep your budget in line, and so that's where we come with our legal advice to you.
Okay. Maria?
Um, I'm, I'm struggling, I'm sorry. I, I, I would ask for maybe potentially just defer it for a couple weeks, so that, table it for a couple weeks, so that I have a chance to discuss this with other people. But that, you know, but I, I changed my mind. I was going to ask for approval, but after hearing the comments, I, I would like to have this table for, for temporarily. So that's my motion.
Julie?
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, to, to table item K. Shelby, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to point out that I, I don't like the clutter of signs myself, but back in twenty-twenty-one, I voted to leave it as it was without restricting the number. I am not just a precinct chair, I'm a county chair, and I had precisely zero people relate to me that they were intimidated. Annoyed, yes, but not intimidated. So I'm, I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to table this item. An- Anthony, have.
Oh, thank you. No, I, I was, I was just going to say that I think as a practical matter, council, we, we've, we've already authorized our city attorney to divulge the legal advice that we were given publicly. If we were to do anything other than to enact this repealing ordinance, we would get sued and certainly lose, because we have said that our legal position as a city is that it's not legal to enforce the ordinance as previously written. So anyway, I, I'm sympathetic to the point, I don't, I, I think most people don't like clutter at polling places, but, you know, having, having divulged legal advice that, that we don't think we can defend the ordinance as previously written, I, I just don't think we can leave it as is.
All right, I have a motion, and a second, to table item K. Please vote. Okay, it's three, three, so it fails. Um. Okay. Yeah.
Let's go back.
Okay, I think everybody's, I, Rick?
I'd like to make a motion, do we approve item K?
And I will.
Okay, I have a motion, and. Yeah. All right. I have a motion, a second, to approve item K. Please vote. Motion passes five to one. All right, next item.
All right, items for individual discussion, public hearing items. Applicants are limited to fifteen minutes presentation time with a five-minute rebuttal if needed. Remaining speakers are limited, limited to thirty total minutes of testimony time with three minutes assigned per speaker. The presiding officer may amend these times as deemed necessary. Non-public hearing items. The presiding officer will permit public comment for items on the agenda not posted for a public hearing. The presiding officer will establish time limits based upon the number of speaker requests, length of the agenda, and to ensure meeting efficiency, and may include a cumulative time limit. Speakers will be called in the order the requests are received until a cumulative time is exhausted. Item number one, public hearing and consideration of the Silver Line Station Areas Plan, a long-range planning policy for the Twelfth Street and Shiloh Road station areas.
This item is consideration of a Silver Line Station Areas Plan, long-range plan, planning document for the station areas. Given that you've already pursued a detailed presentation on this, I'm gonna skip to the end, and let you know that the planning and zoning recommended approval with a vote of eight to zero. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. One question, I just wanted to make sure this, as I understand it, would be in the downtown corridors dashboard, and if I'm understanding correctly, the dashboard calculations from the comprehensive plan that, that apply to the downtown corridors dashboard would, would still apply within this TOD plan. Is that correct?
Uh, no, sir. So this, as a small area plan, the language of the comprehensive plan specifically states that due to the extensive public outreach and the detailed information that the small area plan controls.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Well, thank you for that clarification.
It would still control outside of the station areas, though.
Okay, so it, it basically just in, in the station areas?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you.
All right, thanks. I'll open the public hearing. Do I have speakers?
We do have speakers on this item. The first speaker is William Cravens.
Well, you can both come up and speak together.
William L. And how much time, Mayor?
Uh, just a minute. This is, this is not controversial.
Okay.
Well, first of all, thank you for having us here today, and we appreciate all the hard work that the planning staff has done. They conducted a number of charrettes. I attended each and every one of them. There was a tremendous outreach to the public, and they were able to come up with what I think is a very, very fine plan. It took a great deal of time and effort for them to do it, and my hat's off to them. It includes something that we think is real important to the transit area, especially with the Silver Line and the Red Line now coming together.
Twenty seconds.
I, I, I'm giving everybody a minute. We, we, we understand. We, we, we understand.
And consequently, the efforts that, that the staff put together on this were so extraordinary and so outreaching to the public. And the public commented and they took their comments and they performed on them. So I hope the city will consider this positively and move forward with this 12th Street plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Cravens.
The next speaker is Shaim Ganishram. That's joining us on Zoom.
He, he's not, we only have one sign up.
Hello, are you all able to hear me?
Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sean and I am in support of the Silver Line Station Planning. I believe that the placements of the stations are agreed for commuting around the metro lights that may be convenient stations along the way. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Min Su. And they were supposed to be on Zoom. Are they in the audience by chance? Okay. Um, then, let's see. The next speaker is Tan Du. Please turn on your camera and microphone.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm, my name is Tan Du. I'm a board member of the Madison Estates neighborhood. This neighborhood is the only neighborhood along the Silver Line in City of Plano. The railway just is behind the fence of this neighborhood. Between railway and the fence, there is a ditch. It's a drain for the water come from the railway during the heavy rain. However, Silver Line engineer, they get the bushes and the tree along the fence line and ditch and down. So the soil-
Fifteen seconds.
The soil just gets erosion with time, the power line will also get done. So we request the Silver Line to put a returner wall so that the neighborhood can be, still survive this big engineering work. Okay? That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ariel Herrera, I think they left. Corey Reiniker.
Good evening again. I'm just here to register my support for this. I participated in the stakeholder input as a resident of the Old Town Neighborhood, which is just adjacent to the state, station areas. And I think that the, this plan does a lot to refine the, the community vision and most importantly is going to be adding a lot of, provides the opportunity to add a lot of housing and density around these new stations, which is so important for the city. So that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and we're going to call the other William Cravens because we think he was dropped off inadvertently.
Hi, William Pierce Cravens. I live at 1028 Seventeenth Street in downtown Plano. Very supportive of this plan and hopefully it's adopted this evening. I am hopeful that council will retain some flexibility in considering some proposals from property owners and developments, developers that are impacted within this plan. I'm hopeful that street improvements will be prioritized to create the character and walkability that we all seek and create an environment for further development to commence. The plan also indicates that the property south of 14th Street be rezoned to BG, which would be a wonderful idea.
Twenty seconds.
The cost of zoning for smaller pieces of property is difficult to amortize due to the size of the property. So if the city can help with that, I think it'll spur further development. So thank you so much.
That concludes the speakers.
Okay, all right. No more speakers. I'll close the public hearing, confine the comments to the council. Rick? Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve agenda item number one. Got it. Julie?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve item number one. Please vote. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Comments of public interest.
Comments of public interest. This portion of the meeting is to allow up to three minutes per speaker with thirty total minutes on items of interest or concern and not on items that are on the current agenda. The council may not discuss these items but may respond with factual or policy information. The council may choose to place the item on a future agenda. And we do have two speakers this evening. The first speaker is Alex Stein.
Can you guys see me?
Go ahead, Mr. Stein.
Uh, okay, you guys can see me, hold on. It's hard, okay. Ladies and gentlemen, boys and girls, children of all ages, it's me, Primetime99, Alex Stein. You guys skipped me last week and you know that we had a lawsuit against the city. So for you to say that it was just some sort of accident, I just find that hard to believe. I know you guys are too busy with your dang peanut butter drive and nobody even gives a dang about peanut butter. It's not even any good without jelly, let's just be real. So you guys are trying to raise a bunch of peanut butter, yet you have one of the highest incomes per capita of any city in the country and you're all worried about dang peanut butter. You guys need to get your priorities straight. Now, what we do need to worry about is the, I don't know if you guys are familiar with Nick Ricada, though, and what's going on with him and Steel Toe Morning Show. This is Nick Ricada right here, this is Aaron Amolte. They recently were doing a wife swapping situation and then they told on each other for being on drugs. And Nick Ricada recently took a plea deal, so his life is back on track. So we love that. That's good. Now we got to talk about Jerry Jones. We're in the city of Plano, all right? I love Plano, you love Plano, even though a bunch of Dallas Cowboys died of heroin overdoses in Plano, Mark Twain, A, you know, the list goes on. There's a whole opioid epidemic in Plano because there's a bunch of rich affluent parents that just have their housekeepers raise their kids and they're not even involved in their lives and they don't even really care about them because they're basically disconnected and worried about their own stuff. So their kids get hooked on fentanyl and opiates, next thing you know, they take a hot pill and they wake up dead. And that's a sad reality that's happening in Plano. So you guys are trying to mess with me, but you guys have still limited the ability for speakers to come speak to you in person because you guys are cowards. I can't even see your face on the Zoom call right now. You guys are just as cowardly as Jerry Jones hiring Brian Schottenheimer, who's not qualified to be the coach of the Dallas Cowboys because he's never even been a head coach at any organization or team that he's ever been a part of. The Dallas Cowboys are ran by a bunch of imbeciles, just like the city of Plano. It's ran by a bunch of hot heads, a bunch of old people that have no idea what they're doing. They don't care about their fans, they don't care about their constituents, they don't care about their dang citizens. You guys are wasting not only your time, but my time when I sit at these dang meetings for hours and then you skip over me. So it's not going to work. That's not going to work with me, Jack. So Mayor Muntz, you got Primetime99 pimp on a blimp. I went insane for the Ukraine in your chambers. You know what? They don't even look that good. Whoever designed that, your lighting looks terrible. You look like a dang corpse, you're so white. You need to get some color in your skin, you need to try to, you know, pep in your step, whatever you got to do to look more alive because the lighting makes you look like you're a hundred years older than you actually are. So Mayor Muntz, you need to fix that. You need to tell the Dallas Cowboys that no players should live in Plano. We should outlaw any Dallas Cowboys from, from being in Plano. And luckily, Donald Trump's kicking out illegal immigrants, even though there's not really any illegal immigrants in Plano. I know there's one Asian lady on the council and I hope they don't kick out any of your illegal family members. If they are illegal, I'm not sure.
Twenty seconds.
Saying if they are. I hope they do not get kicked out, even though I support Trump kicking out all illegal immigrants with criminal history. So I just want to say, don't ever skip me again. I was really laying off you guys and then you guys have wakened a beast. So I'll be back in person. You need to fix it so we can come speak to you in person so I can see your faces because I know you're scared, Mayor Muntz. I know you're shaking in your boots right now. I can hear you, I can feel you.
The next speaker is Christopher Ricatelli.
How much time do I have?
Go ahead.
How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Okay.
Three minutes.
My name's Chris Ricatelli. I'm a resident of Plano for fourteen years. I'm here just to address the concern of Buzz, Buzz Razer Park at McDermott and Coit intersection on the west side. We had over two hundred and fifty signatures from local families just over the weekend for a petition. I had sent it to all councilmen, all council members at about approximately 3:50 PM today. Just to give a highlight of the petition, it's to adjust the current state of the park and fails to meet the needs of our community, imposes significant health and safety and accessibility challenges for children, families, and elderly. Updated park improvements are needed immediately. Other park reasons are lack of restroom facilities for anybody who needs to use a restroom. The absence of bathroom, restrooms has led to situations where children have experienced accidents or families have had to leave, had to leave the park prematurely. Additionally, the park also is a thoroughway for Preston Ridge Trail runners, a bike path on Ridgeview and the Legacy Trail. All three converge on the intersection. The children's equipment is outdated, it needs to be redesigned. It's only designated two through five, leaving older kids without suitable activities. There's flooding issues on the west and east sides, leading to improper drainage which is critical preventing pouring, pooling of water, which creates unsafe slippery conditions and diminishes the ability of the park. Additionally, stagnant water becomes breeding ground for mosquitoes, posing a health risk, including potential West Nile virus. Several community members have noted that during the summer, the park becomes unusable and due to the mosquito population, larger pavilion is needed to address population increases in activity in the area. Bridge connectivity because a lot of kids cross McDermott Road on the south side. Parking accessibility for ADA compliant. Elderly people are not able to access the park during rainy, during rainy times. Currently parking is only available on Rockledge Lane on the, on the west side of the park, which is a high-traffic area, and then also Terriel Trail, which is a semi cul-de-sac. Safety concerns need to be improved immediately. The lighting fencing, update, update surfaces, which will create a safer environment, preventing injuries and discouraging unsafe behaviors. Restrooms will promote proper hygiene practices such as handwashing, reducing the spread of illness, and shared recreational space. And community accessibility would increase, allowing all ages to make the space usable for families. We, the upgrades cannot wait and would be highly utilized by everybody in the area, especially with having over two hundred and fifty, about two hundred and fifty signatures within a ten-hour period. It would highly benefit everybody. We thank you for the city council for reviewing our concerns and taking the next steps for our community needs and we want to relive up to the reputation as a city of a community of excellence. Thank you so much.
That was the last speaker. One of the gentlemen that had signed up to speak earlier tonight is now on Zoom. Did you want to hear what he has to say?
Four.
It was for one of the DART items. Silver Line.
Sure.
Okay.
One minute. One minute.
David, go ahead and turn your camera on, you have one minute.
Hello, are you able to hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize for not joining earlier. I was having some technical issues. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to say, I'm very excited for the Silver Line. Even though I currently do not reside in Plano, I conduct a lot of business in Plano. And I think the city of Plano will benefit greatly from continuing to support DART and doing everything it can to support DART, support the finishing of the Silver Line in any way that the city can do that.
Twenty seconds.
I think is extremely important. Additionally, just to comment on that, the inappropriate comments of the gentleman from the one before. Plano has a wonderful Asian, South Asian community, beautiful immigrant community. I hope Plano continues to be more and more welcoming to all people.
Time.
Thank you. Thank you. We, we had a meeting today, Anthony.
Oh.
With Chris.
Oh, fantastic.
And I thought we had an understanding of our next steps and then he decided to do this too. But I, we're, we're going to work with Ron and, and find out, you know, what, what we're looking at.
Oh, okay, fantastic. I was just going to ask for a, you know, feedback on the petition that we submitted.
So it's, you know, we've already done this once already today, now it's twice.
Oh, gotcha.
We'll, we'll, we'll get the information, for sure.
Fantastic.
There being no further business, we're adjourned.
Okay.
... began, and so we have downtown design standards and we have heritage preservation procedures in place to help preserve downtown.
In a lot of these locations, we're talking about the reimagining. This place, downtown Plano, has become an arts district.
Well, this all began really in 2002.